Good evening, everyone. This study session of the Board of Education for July 8th, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Director Kurler is absent this evening along with our student representative, Jasmine Jaswell. Mina. So at this time, we will have public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes. And that's a best.
Porter. So if you guys would just come forward and sit at the testimony table, I'll go ahead and read the directions for public comment. "Thank you so much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and others, and other presenters. The Board will not respond to any questions or comments at this time, but the Board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you have left your contact information, either phone number or email, on the sign-up sheet. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.70.012, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the Board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office and will not be heard in this forum." Now, the good part. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear right there in front of you. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light comes on, and at the end, a red light will go on, and a buzzer will sound, and we will ask that you respectfully end your comments at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and thank both of you for being here on such a beautiful evening. Dave?
My name is Dave Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. Chair Knowles, Superintendent Smith, Board members, and members of the public. Several weeks ago, my prior public comment to the Board urged the Board to request a five-year dual-language expansion plan from PPS administration for consideration in time for the boundary review. For consideration, I also submitted my own five-year immersion expansion proposal, which included adding in 2016-17 a two-strand, one-way Spanish dual-language immersion program at the now vacant George L. Smith Elementary School in southwest Portland. Tonight, I am speaking to that issue, the need for an additional West Side Spanish immersion program. First, there is no immersion program in the Wilson Cluster. It is the only high school cluster without an immersion program at the elementary, middle, or high school levels. Second, lottery data for the Ainsworth Spanish immersion program shows that there is enough parent interest on the West Side for another Spanish immersion program. In the 2013-14 PPS lottery for kindergarten slots in the Ainsworth Spanish immersion program, 50 were approved, 19 wait-listed, and 55 denied no space. A new two-strand immersion program at Smith would need about 50 kindergarteners to be full. Third, about 80 percent of the applicants for the Ainsworth Spanish immersion program, as well as of those that are accepted and turned down, are from the West Side. There is enough West Side interest alone for an additional Spanish immersion program. Fourth, additional classroom capacity is needed on the West Side now and into the future. Six of the 10 West Side elementary schools are overcrowded. Data's in the handout. Fifth, opening a new immersion program could draw students away from currently overcrowded schools, reducing the need for boundary changes. For example, Chapman is overcrowded, yet, 2012-13, the latest data, only six of its 15 first-choice applicants for the Spanish immersion program at Ainsworth were admitted. With more space at Ainsworth or another immersion program, nine kindergarteners could have been shifted out of an overcrowded Chapman. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Ny, spelled N-Y-E. I'm the Executive Director of Girls Incorporated of the Pacific Northwest, as well as a board member of the Coalition of Advocates for Equal Access for Girls. I'm also a parent of a fourth grader at Ainsworth and a sixth grader at West Sylvan in the Portland Public School District. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of teen parents. It's come to my attention that through the high school redesign process and the educational specifications that have been crafted, that childcare centers are part of a comprehensive high school plan, and I urge the Board to consider the needs of teen parents and to keep this as a priority moving forward for these students. Becoming a parent at any age is life-altering, as I know, but for parents of teen parents, this can be overwhelming. We also know that the results, the outcomes, the educational outcomes for teen parents can be dramatically reduced and their lifetime earning prospects greatly impacted. We also know that one of the specific issues identified by teen parents for dropping out of high school was lack of transportation between their homes, daycares, and school for both them and their children. We also know that teen parents are seldom asked what resources and types of support would help them be successful in school, that their ability to use their voices on these issues are often not fully accessed. We also know from research that teen parents say that the biggest support they need is childcare, and the least voiced issue for support from them had to do with actually career development programs, which I thought was interesting. But we also know that research on school-based childcare for teen parents unanimously finds substantial and long-lasting impacts for both the teen parents and the children of these parents, including emotional support for the parents, educational success, financial self-sufficiency. I'd also like to point out that the children of teen parents, when enrolled in school childcare settings, have higher rate of physical healthy development, as well as emotional social growth, and we're setting the foundation for future educational success. These children will be the children that enroll in PPS in the future, and I urge you to make sure that their needs are being met. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to both of you, and please make sure Ms. Houston has your contact information. Okay, tonight, our next agenda item is boundary review with Portland State University's Center for Public Service. At our June 2nd meeting, we had the PSU Center for Public Service provide us with a readiness assessment, and today, we have Jim Jacks, who's going to come up to the table here with us to be facilitator for a discussion that the Board is going to have about the kinds of things that we need to be concerned about as we look at boundary review. Some of those are: what values does the Board have regarding boundary review? What are the goals? What are our goals as a Board and as a district for boundary review? What's on the table and what's not? To have a discussion about that, negotiables, non-negotiables. Also, what will the Board ask of the community to provide input on, so the community has a clear idea about what we're going to be coming to them for information about? I think another issue for us to talk about is how involved is the Board and where are we involved in boundary review? And then, of course, what stakeholders do we as a Board need to make sure that we're talking to as we're doing this boundary review work? So, see, Jim is at the table now, so thank you very much for being here tonight, and we look forward to the discussion.
Thank you very much, Chair Knowles, and it has been my tremendous good fortune for the last 15 years to be working in a variety of problem-solving jobs, and one of the things that is personally gratifying about it is working with people who are trying very hard to move their community forward in a positive direction, and I have appreciated very much your attention to this topic over the last few months. So, and I should also mention that I'm a parent of an incoming fifth grader and eighth grader in Vancouver Public Schools, so I definitely personally believe in public education. So, one of the things that PSU was asked to do is to make some, ultimately, some recommendations on civic engagement strategy around boundary review, and there are many steps between that and where we are now. We've come a long way, and we've done a lot of work, and we've done a lot of work with the public, talking to people, doing this assessment, and where we are right now is trying to work and touch base with PPS leadership to sort out internal alignment and trying to get a better understanding of what are the key topics, what are the key priorities. And so that drives a lot of what, there's only three questions tonight, but I anticipate there could be a fairly wide-ranging discussion on each of those, and you know better than many just how interconnected a lot of these topics are. So, this internal alignment phase is really to try and prepare the organization to engage with the public in a productive way around boundary review, in whatever fashion that takes the form of. At this point, we don't know what that'll look like yet, but it's an organic evolving process, and as we move forward, things will become more clear in the months ahead. So, one of the things we discovered early on was this realization that boundary reviews happen to greater or lesser degrees on a regular basis, and so, one of the, one of the things we're trying to sort out is how can the district find a way to do this on an ongoing basis in the years ahead? And there's a lot of work to do on that still, and that's part of what brings us to this evening. So, how you handle things on an ongoing fashion is where we ultimately would like to present some information and choices to district leadership. So, at a certain level, and I should also say, Phil Keisling, he is traveling on business in eastern Oregon, and Wendy Willis is traveling on business in Ohio, otherwise, they would be doing this instead of me this evening.
We're happy to have you.
So, at a certain level, where we got started, you kicked this off with the Board Resolution 4718, directing staff to develop and recommend a process for comprehensive review of school boundaries district-wide. So that led to staff working with PSU and a lot of the work that led to our report that we presented in June. So, there's, there's a lot of big topics in your resolution, and how they fit together, and, you know, how you want boundary review to interact with them is part of what tonight's about. So, at, so I think at this point, I'd like to, unless any of you have any questions for me at the beginning, Director Beal.
Sure, Steve?
Did you, one of the things I would identify was doing Portland State stuff, but they wouldn't hire me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of the things that I would identify as doing Portland State stuff, but they wouldn't have hired me, is I'd have talked to all those disgruntled parents. I mean, we are still, over a year, more than that, I think, later, have, all those disgruntled parents are still enemies of the district to some degree, and so I think one of the things I would have done almost first was go and talk to those people and said, "What went wrong last time? What do we need to do different?" Have you done that? I mean, pulled out those particularly leaders of those community, those community leaders that had been upset about it? Have you done any of that? I mean, is that part of your strategy in the community to do that? Do you need names from the district to tell you who they are? From me, I can tell you. Go on Facebook, Bobby can tell you who they are. Everybody can tell you, right? Who those people are.
In a nutshell, we did do some of that. The assessment that came to you, or the report that came to you in June was based on about talking, about 25, it might have been 30, interviews with about 100 people, and there were groups of parents that were part of that. I can't promise that we talked to every disgruntled parent.
Were they the disgruntled, upset parents who were still angry with the district?
Some of them definitely were.
Some of them were, because I've talked to some recently, and they don't, they weren't contacted, I know. They were really in the leadership of that, forefront of that movement to a huge degree.
So, part of what we're-
I'd be hopeful to do that.
I definitely agree, and that is, one of the goals of a longer-term civic engagement strategy that we would design based on the feedback we've gotten thus far would be how to reach out to different communities in the district and engage with them and hear and work with them. So, from an assessment point of view, the key isn't to talk to every single person, but to talk to enough that you get a flavor of what some of the concerns are, and we definitely met with a number of disgruntled parents from a variety of clusters, and an assessment doesn't have to be kind of perfect. It just needs to be good enough to help you understand what the next steps are. So, we think we did enough of that to get a flavor, to get a good read of the flavor of some of the concerns and criticisms, and a lot of those made their way into the report that was presented on June 2nd. So, that gets us partway there. Where we're trying to do some work now is how can we gather some information to help make some recommendations that would lead to a civic engagement process that could lead to a good set of boundary review decisions over the years to come? It's, it's easy to skip to the end. There's a lot of work between now and then. So-
Bobby? Thank you, Jim.
So, I think it's worth remembering that when we've done some of our school closures in the past, we were in a very different place in terms of often responding to really severe budget cuts and shortfalls, and I think that we recognize that our process often wasn't what it should have been, and was often too fast, and changes really hard. One of the things I think we're trying to do with this process is to do it in a much more, you know, kind of structured, intentional way, so that anybody looking at a potential school closure, and I don't know that we're even talking about school closures here, would kind of have an understanding of how we landed there. So, first of all, we're, we're talking about enrollment balancing. At this point, I don't believe we're talking about school closures, and in fact, it's hard for me to imagine that we're going to land on school closures because, in fact, we're in a increasing enrollment situation. So, for example, years ago, when I was involved in some of the school closures, we had a declining budget situation and declining enrollment situation. So, we're in a pretty different place today. I don't think that we're talking about closures. I think we're looking at schools that are over-enrolled and under-enrolled and actually trying to ensure going forward that there's a much more intentional and transparent process. It's never going to be easy. There's always going to be some parents who are upset, and there's also going to be parents who, once they get through the other side of it, especially if they're in an under-enrolled school, and, you know, in the next year or two, their child ends up with a much more robust program because the school's appropriately sized, who actually, you know, realize that was really hard, but it was okay, and my kid got through it. So, I guess I just want to make sure that we're separating out the idea of school closures from this process. Not that this isn't going to be difficult, but we are trying to be much more intentional about how we go about it and involving the community much more, which is why we have PSU here to start with.
And I think that on the issue of school closures, that's another issue that we'll have to discuss amongst the Board to see if that's on or off the table. I mean, that's the purpose of all of this tonight, is for us to all discuss what's on the table, what's off the table, and a number of other questions which you're going to get to.
Terrific. So, the first one, in the first phase of the PSU team's work, we heard a number of reasons for conducting district-wide boundary review, and enrollment balancing, and preserving strong neighborhood schools, creating more equitable access to programs for all students, but it wasn't clear to us kind of what the primary purpose should be, and that's part of what we're hoping to hear from each of you tonight, based on what you know now, with a lot of intertwined policies and dynamics at work. Based on what you know now, what should be the primary purpose of a district-wide boundary review?
Ruth?
I mean, I think, for me, where I'm at, again, recognizing the incredible complexity and interwoven nature of all of this, but it's, to me, it's really around that balancing of the enrollment so that we have an appropriate number of students, both for the program and for the building, and sort of that it's part of a coherent system, both coherent in terms of where the boundaries are located and how we have a, what's our pre-K through 12 continuum, geography, all those pieces. Recognizing, of course, that that alone is not sufficient, the numbers of students in a building is not sufficient to create a quality school, and that there's all the other pieces, but we're also working on in other arenas, principal quality, teacher quality, our programs, sports, everything else. So, not ever to claim that this is sufficient, and we all know that, but I think it's important to reaffirm that and be really clear to the public that we understand that. Another important piece is, and you alluded to this, is just to normalize the notion of boundary changes. Our sister district to the west, in Beaverton, they, they've been a growing district. They have, they, my understanding is they change boundaries just routinely, almost just, almost, I don't know if it's quite just by issuing a letter of notification, but it's by no means sort of the huge issue that we sort of have only done piecemeal and was sort of in a, it's been sort of a crisis within Portland Public. And I think really with PSU's help, I'm hoping that we're going to get to the place where we do have a coherent, transparent, understandable, rational framework, so that as we continue to grow, which we're going to continue to grow, continue to have challenges with our facilities, which we will rebuild over time thanks to the voters, but it's going to take time, that we have that framework and that we don't have both what we have had for a number of years, which are these hotspot crises of super overcrowded or schools that are struggling due to low enrollment, and then not have sort of the, and again, we heard the feedback very clearly from communities, and parents, "Don't just do this one-off in one area or one school," but you do need to look at it holistically. And I really felt it was important when the district did, during one of those processes, assert very clearly that this is not about people's property values, this is about education of our students, and I think it's really important to keep that at the forefront. I feel like as a city, we've kind of, many of us have gotten into this mode of, we need to get away from the notion that there's some good schools and there's some bad schools. We need all our schools to be good, and again, we have a number of other ways in which we're trying to get to that place. I recognize we may not be there quite yet, but we need to not have people be basing, feeling like it's a life and death decision of what school they get into and basing their feeling that that, once they buy a house in that school district, that that is a forever... Again, we need to be doing everything we can as a district to ensure that every school is a quality school, that everyone, any child can succeed in. Let's all stop there.
Other's? Steve, go ahead.
When I tried to get my brain around this, it seemed to me, and is Portland State approaching it this way? Is this, is this in line with your thinking? Just out of curiosity, mostly. There was two parts to this issue. One is the organization, the physical organization of the district. In other words, how close are the children to the schools is one of the physical aspects. Another is the size of the school itself, and the third major one, what are the, what natural boundaries are there? Transportation corridors, train tracks, the river? Those are natural boundaries. So, has Portland State done this, taken a map of where the children are and said, "If we divi, if we met this idea of children went to the closest school?" And do we have a map that laid out that would show what that would look like? And then, if we had, if we then put in the size of the school, because that would be a limiting thing, and then we put in natural boundaries, we would come up with a physical description of where we might start if we'd have started 100 years ago and we had the same thing? I mean, have they, have you done that? Because that's, that's one, and then, but then this, I'm sorry, I asked a question, and then I trust you. And then this, but I messed up here. And then we would add past practice to some degree, and then the next thing, then we'd get into social engineering, after we've at least looked to see what that would be. To me, that seems to make a lot of sense. Have you done that, come up with that kind of a map?
We've not created a map like that, to my knowledge.
I did a good idea.
Ultimately, a map or a series of maps like that could be produced at some point in the future, but that, my impression is we're a long way from that point right now.
Well, I would think that would be the starting point, to see where we would be physically if everybody went to their neighborhood school and then we had the, and tried to jiggle within natural-
And it may be that your Director of Enrollment and Transfer has some maps like that. If she does, I'm not aware of it.
I doubt it. I'm not aware of it.
Jim, do you, do you want to just briefly go over the purpose of this tonight, so that all the Board members are clear about what we're actually talking about and where we're trying to get, and where PSU fits in that?
Sure. So, at a, at a basic level, what we're trying to do right now is determine the internal alignment of PPS at a Board level, and at the leadership levels within the school district, and that will help us make some recommendations on different scenarios that you may elect to do moving forward. So, at the, so your question really, in my view, skipped to the end of the process-
Or back to the start.
Right, so we're, we're earlier in it there, and part of it is, from a boundary review point of view, the district will, will need to make some intentional, transparent choices about how to engage with the public and on what topics, and that's part of what we're trying to surface tonight and with these meetings with the district leadership, is, you know, what's the primary purpose of boundary review? And if we ask it in four different meetings and get five different answers, that's one thing. If we ask it in four different meetings and get the same answer, that's a different thing, and it leads to other, it helps guide how a process might occur.
So, if I can jump in, what I, what I think I heard from my colleague, Director Beal, is that physical attributes are a high priority for, for where you would start. You would look at physical space-
I don't see how you can actually go out and talk about the social engineering aspects, which everything else is, without knowing what it would be if you just had, just used the physical situation. And so, when we went out to, that's the first question I'd ask if I was a person out in the, out in the audience. I'd say, "Well, what would happen if everybody went just to this nearest school?"
Right. So, what I know of it, and again, I think that's what this discussion is to figure out, is trying to figure out what our priorities and what our values are. So, for example, do natural barriers present a problem, or do we just skip that for the social engineering factors? And I hear you saying, "No, we should start with the physical." But our Director of Enrollment and Transfer has produced maps about how many kids live in each census tract data, and we have maps of all our schools, so it would not be hard for us to figure that out. But I think the tough part is when you say closest school, like I think of my house, and I'm about a mile away from three different schools. So, which one do you call closest to me? Because it depends on this arbitrary line that somebody drew down the middle of a street.
Yeah, and, but, but you, if you use just closest and you use the number, once you start with the closest, then you go to the numbers, then you go to the natural boundaries. Eventually, you come up with something that would happen that would be totally outside of social, the social engineering. I'm looking for a formula that gives you outside of the social engineering, which would allow you to set the social engineering. Now, then we decide, or we can decide now. So, if we got to that point, now what's social engineering? And that would be honest and transparent to the community. We think that you should have, we should intermingle economic groups. So, no school would be below or like that. But I don't know how you can answer that unless you have the other.
Well, and I think part of the, part of the discussion is an acknowledgement of how, as you pointed out, how interrelated some of these issues are. So, for example, that even if we did that, it would assume, for example, current grade configuration at, at our current building, so K86.
Right, exactly.
And so, I could see our public saying, "Right, I have a much closer school to me. It's right across over there, but you're shipping me over there, and so do we use vacant buildings?" buildings or, and how do we? So I think that's the discussion we're trying to have, is what are our priorities tonight? And again, what I hear you saying is look at just map out closest, maybe you're saying active school.
I'm saying physical priorities might be, might be, should it be the prior, major priority? Well, right now, I would say since we don't have any social engineering going on, it is right now. Just start there. Go to the closest school.
It would be interesting information to have.
Bobby?
So I think this is a worthwhile discussion. I look at it more as in page two, I mean, on question two, which you're going to be getting to. In terms of the first question, the primary purpose of district-wide boundary review, I think that, to me, there's, there's five, and we have three. The first is balancing enrollment, the second is preserving strong neighborhood schools, that's obviously a huge core value, and then creating more equitable access to programs for all students. I'm assuming there that we're talking about focus programs, choice programs, as Dave Porter talked about, opportunity to go to a language immersion program, that sort of thing. So those three, I'm definitely...
What was the first one, Bobby?
Well, it's what's in, in our memo, balancing enrollment, so that we don't have schools that are way over-enrolled or way under-enrolled, preserving strong neighborhood schools and equitable access to immersion and focus programs. The two that I would add and are, would be, I want to ensure that every school has a robust program, and where we really struggle with that is if schools are too small. So I, to me, I want to be looking at what's happening inside the building and ensuring, like in the case of a high school and the rest, that we have enough students that we can truly offer a robust program to every single child. And the fifth one that I would add is, we want to always be looking to preserve our capture rate. We want to make sure that, right now, 85% or so of parents send their children to Portland Public Schools. As we're going through this process, hopefully we're going to maintain that or even bring it up. So to me, those are two things that I would add. I have a bunch in question number two, but those are two key ones that I would look at here. Because I do think right now, we could potentially be losing families because schools, you know, their neighborhood schools, elementary schools, 800 kids in it, or has 300 kids in it. So I do think that capture rate piece is important, so.
So I'll just follow along on that one. That one, which is one of the things that I thought was important, and that is, I think we need to have a discussion around the K eights, based on, because I think it's really difficult to have a robust program in a school that can serve as 300 kids and is a K eight. You just can't do it. And so I think we need to look at those K eights that are in facilities that are too small to actually hold the number of students that you need to have a robust program in a K eight. And that's in addition to all the ones that everybody else has had. I think that's an important discussion for us to have, where those schools need to main, where we need to maintain those K eights in schools that are big enough to have a full robust program for K through eight. And if we don't, I guess another question will be, where would we put more middle schools if we have to have some of those schools moved to K fives in order to, again, support a robust program for a K five? Then you're going to have to figure out where those six through eight students go for middle school, so. And then the, there was one other, there's one other thing that I was really surprised about recently, and that is, I don't know if I should have been surprised or not, and I think it was, I read it in your report, and that is that about 66% of our families go to their neighborhood schools. And we put such a focus on neighborhood schools, and only 66% of our families go to neighborhood schools, 44% go someplace else. So I think that it's, it's not that I oppose to neighborhood schools, I think neighborhood schools are the backbone of our city, but I just think that that's an interesting fact that we should probably consider when we're thinking about our neighborhood schools and how high up the priority list that goes, given the priority that 44% of our neighborhoods are not, 34, excuse me, are not, so.
Can I piggyback on that?
Yeah, sure.
So a couple of things. First, totally agree with your comment about the, I think it actually is kind of a question two issue just around the configurations, because I would agree particularly in the Jefferson cluster, where that, I believe, is the only cluster that does not have a middle school option and where, so I've continued to say that, and the problem, one of the, one of the conundrums here is not wanting to create additional upheaval and change, which we keep hearing, please do not continue to upheave and change. Because on the other hand, we also continue to hear both support for the K eights and support or wish for a middle school access to that option. So for me, I was really struggling with how could we go ahead and start redrawing boundaries to address the issues of over and under enrollment and have coherent, sensible new boundaries until we have resolved that question? So it feels like that discussion, particularly in that area, really needs to be, to happen early on, and to sort of map that out and figure out how we have the discussion. And then the, the other piece is around, just to remind everyone, that the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer, or SACIT, is talking, is discussing that very issue, Pam, of choice and how does this fit in and access to that. And I know that SACIT is working with the PSU team to figure out how to align their work, and so that's, that's another part of the challenge of this work, we just could point that out.
Bobby?
I just wanted to add on to the conversation of K eight versus middle school, because, I mean, as I'm talking to people, there, I get about an equal number of people are passionate about K five middle school, an equal number. If the problem is in our K eights that we can't offer a robust program to our middle school age kids, what I think we need to be looking at instead is what is the ideal size of our schools? So in that case, a K eight needs to be larger. We should probably have three classes at a minimum per grade level. So now you're talking about 700, and I think right now, our number is way less than that in terms of ideal size. So I guess I want to make sure that we don't necessarily blow up the whole discussion about middle school versus K eight, because there are passionate supporters of either. But let's look at how we solve the core or the key issue that we've heard with K eights is that we're not offering a robust enough program in the middle school year. So how do you do that? You need more children. And so maybe that's the discussion we need to be having instead.
I think it's a both and.
Yeah, so I've always, I've always been a proponent of K eights, so I'm not saying that we should do away with them. My concern is, and it has been for as long as I've been on the board and first saw the report about our schools that were too small to hold enough kids to do a robust program for a K eight. If you have a school that can only hold 400 students, how can you put 600 to 800 students in there, which is what you need in order to have a robust program for a K eight? So, I mean, that's, that's a big issue for us, I think.
I was just going to say that, that the size, I'm glad you brought it up, because to me, that's, that's part of the question, is I don't feel like we've settled on a size. The size changes depending on the state's budget. Oftentimes, I think there's probably some learning from neighboring school districts about what size they have, and I think that as we have this discussion, it just reminds us that to keep in the back of our mind about when we're rebuilding facilities, if we have facilities that are too small, and we saw that with the high school, right, as we've already increased one size, I think we have to, have to look at that as we begin to plan this. But overall, I agree that it'd be useful information to have just a sense of what size the schools can really hold and how you measure that is an ever-moving target. Do you look at number of teachers that have to use rooms? Do you look at square foot per kid? Do you look, I mean, there are a million different ways to do that, but it's, it sometimes feels like those numbers are more fluid than it feels good to make decisions on, but it depends on which methodology you're using to calculate it. And I do prioritize for myself something about neighborhood schools, but I appreciate, Director Knowles, what you're saying is, I often hear people talk about, they have a lot of admiration for the program offerings at West Sylvan, West East Sylvan, and primarily that's because of their size. There are about 900 students, and students are not walking to their neighborhood school. In that case, people have decided that it's okay to bus longer, longer routes to get that kind of a size and get that kind of programming. So I think that has to be a real discussion that we have, and again, it comes back to size. But I do think that part of why we're interested in doing this is we recognize the history of boundaries in Portland, and they were cherry-mandered, right? They were very intentionally to exclude some people from these schools or include people from these schools. So I think that what I hear Director Buell, and maybe I'm mischaracterizing him, but him, I feel like he's just asking for just the data, the raw data, where would, where would boundaries naturally fall if we just looked at it as a blank? Because then we can begin to have discussions about, do we want equal socioeconomic status? Do we want this size? Do we want that size? Do we want neighborhood schools? Are we okay with busing? How far is busing? What does that do to our costs? And then I also, I haven't heard people mention this, because right now, I think that we believe that this is a K eight boundary review discussion, but I'd be curious to hear what my colleague's idea, right? If you change boundaries for K eights, you intentionally or unintentionally, and hopefully we'll be intentional about it, may reassign somebody to a different high school, and we have to be mindful of that. So I'd be curious to hear people's thoughts about that, knowing that we just went through a process for that, and people, there was something I, yes, we want these to become more regular so that they don't, so that we don't back up 50 years or 60 years before having to do it again. At the same time, I think it's very fair for our community and our families to expect some stability, that they're not going to move from this school to that school to this five times in the time that they're with the district. Because while I don't agree with the property values, I do, I do know that people are making lifelong decisions based on a community and what it can offer, which is why I think, Pam, you said it's, they are the backbone of a livable city. So I just want to throw that, I guess, out there, is that stability is an important piece to me, is that we would look at how we would do this in a way that doesn't create insignificant or unnecessary stability, instability.
So you mentioned, I'm just trying to get this down, Greg. You mentioned transportation, which I think is an important issue. Mixed SESs, I have in my note, and that, what is, what was that?
Socioeconomic status. There's a lot of research that shows out, shows the more balanced you can have, actually there are exact percentages, but that the percentage of low income or higher, upper income makes a difference, and not necessarily because of the income, but because of the resources and the time that communities can provide in the school.
And so you would, you would list that as a goal or a value to change our schools or to make our schools that?
Eventually, I think, I started with kind of what Steve was saying.
We've moved into question two.
It's not really a goal.
I think we've moved into question two, and I'm wondering if we want to finish up this question.
Can I just, can I finish my comment? Great. And then the last one you had was some permanence. Is that, is that right? Okay, great. Thank you. Matt, you haven't, you haven't talked yet, or you have a comment?
I do have a comment.
Oh, boy.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. I'm going to step up in elevation on this and maybe mention a couple of the things that I hope will, when PSU presents back to us, these will be some of the keystones to the process. Couple of words that are key to me, one is creating parity across our district, another is equity of opportunity. So phrases like, this action promotes an equity of opportunity or parity across our district, that's the kind of thing that I'd like to hear. I think too, generally, I'm looking for a logical, smart process, perhaps formula, that stands the test of time, not because it is perfect, but because it is designed specifically to evolve with the changing demographics of our community. And very clearly, I think it needs to, needs to include input from the community in which we serve. And then finally, you know, this is a, this is a hope, a wish, is that we are able to no longer distinguish our schools or the quality of schools based on the zip codes in which they reside. I don't think that is something we can do right now, and I don't think it's something that we've been able to do for a very long time.
If at all. Thank you. Steve?
I am following up on what Matt said. I had five things that just were off the top. I just haven't talked to enough people to give you what I think would be really good answers, but here's five things off the top. First, I think, is a physical review that you need to do that. And secondly, I think children should be able to go to the school closest to their house, including special ed children, as best we can. And third, I kind of believe that we should have a landing point, maybe if you wanted to look ahead, was at least one middle school in each cluster. So you're choosing maybe which way you want to go, kind of meeting, meeting up. And I think in the end, it's going to probably end up being really, the details will be done in sections. I really do think it will. It's, I think we eventually, and the most important thing to us, to agree, to agree for me, is that we have a really broad input up front. I know I'm always talking about that, up front. First thing we do is talk to people, not when we send out the plan, but before we send out a plan. We go out and say, what do you think, in a way that gets their thinking, and then we deal with it. It's not that you, it's not that you, that you can agree to everybody, I mean, it's like this principal stuff we're doing, principals for a fit, you know? Yeah, well, what I want is, I want in my kid's school, somebody that won't take any crap off of those kids. I mean, that would be, I mean, eventually, you end up with just all over the place things, but it allows your, it helps the thinking of our people is what we need, not because everybody gets room, but because it helps us focus our thinking, our staff focus our thinking, when they hear all these various different viewpoints. Thank you.
Anybody else on first question?
Only on question one, right?
Jim, do you need some? Yeah, do you, do you have what you need for question one?
I have a lot of notes, so I'm feeling very good about things right now.
No shortage of opinions here.
On to question two. So as we've seen just now, you start to begin a conversation around boundary review, and a lot of interrelated issues come up. And this is where, and we've gotten a taste of that, but I know some of you have been holding back for this question, we're trying to get a sense of what are some of your strong preferences about things that should or should not be included in a district-wide boundary Moving programs, or changing programs, or school reconfigurations, closures, all of those things are things people have alluded to or mentioned, and there's a whole longer list of what might be on or off the table in your minds around a district-wide boundary review. So back to you.
Anybody? Bobby, you want to start?
I think, I mean, I have notes all over the place. I think several of these have already come up through question one. So strong preferences about things we shouldn't, we should or shouldn't include in the review. In terms of should, definitely the ideal size of schools, I think that's probably one of the most important things we need to talk about, and I'm going to have these a little mixed up. I think the discussion about whether natural boundaries, river, freeways, I think Steve mentioned train tracks, whether, whether that should come into play or not. What will preserve our capture rate? High school assignments came up already. The impact of the bond and our ability to potentially build new schools and larger schools as we go is, is, I think, needs to be in here somehow. In terms of what should be, I think we need potentially more detailed and longer-term population projections. I'm not convinced, I think right now, we're sort of looking at a 10-year out, and I think we might need to look beyond that. I'd be curious to understand how charter schools and our alternative school networks get into the discussion at some point. The one school that's sort of a, a little bit unique in our district is Skyline Elementary School, which is a pretty small, almost rural school within our boundaries, and I think, I think we need to decide if we're going to make sort of an exception to whatever the ideal school size is for that. Having had kids who went there, who were on the bus for an hour each way to go to school back in the day, it's just a slightly different phenomenon. So I think we need to think about what we would do or whether we would allow an exception in that particular case. So those are a couple off the top of my head.
Sure.
It's something that should not be in... Something that should not be included. Frankly, I don't think, I don't think school closures, or at this point, program closures should be included in the discussion. I think we, I think if a process prepares us during, you know, what I would consider, you know, make it to make wartime decisions, or decisions during budget cuts, decisions during, during times of enrollment drops, I think that can inform of how, inform us how we're going to do that. But I, where we're at right now, and as Bobby described, I would not suggest those being, those things being on the table.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, it doesn't seem, I don't, I mean, potentially, there might be a scenario where that would come up as an option, but I don't really see how, given that this overcrowding is overall is really our issue, and coping, planning for future growth. So, yeah, I would agree with that. And I think, you know, it's, it's, given sort of the long list and the complexity of this figuring out again, you know, I think we've had this discussion before too, of, given that we do have a number of urgent issues in a number of schools of under or over enrollment, how are we going to balance, you know, really tackling in a holistic way all these different issues and landing it in a, in a way that has allowed time for really genuine public input, while still making some changes and adjustments that we need to make? Not falling back into the, the one-off that doesn't give us the holistic. So I'm not, you know, I don't feel like we've figured out what that balance is, and that seems like one of the, the key challenges here. And I'm not sure, starting to recall that, that the sort of charge or challenge from the PSU team was figure out a whole bunch of stuff that we've really never have figured out by August, and then we can move forward. And so, you know, I, that's.
No problem.
Yeah. And there's also issues, I mean, you know, things like, you know, current policy of grandfathering around to the, to the stability. Being really, having that discussion and clarifying that hopefully upfront. So that if that is a good part of people's angst in this, that that can be relieved, or at least we can have had that discussion upfront, so it's not the elephant in the room that is worrying everybody, and we're not getting to that. So there's pieces, I mean, and is that where we are going to land? Or do we have to consider changing that basis? And that's been some of the discussion at SACET, right, around sibling preference? On the one hand, that provides stability for families to be able to both be in the focus option. But on the other hand, that takes up slots and reduces access for other students, and contributes to the fact that our, currently our focus option system, the demographics do not reflect the demographics of our district, and that's an equity issue. So wrestling with those things, again, upfront, totally hear that and agree with that. But at the same time, the Portland process cannot extend forever. We do need to make some, some decisions and some changes, particularly to relieve schools where there are, either aren't enough students to have the program that they deserve, or there are so many students that they're just bursting at the seams.
So I, depending on what PSU is crafting for us, I don't think I would take closures off the table. And the reason I say that is that if this is a long-term process, policy that you're, that we're working on with you, I could foresee in the future, as we're doing our bonds, some of the smaller schools consolidating and maybe adding middle schools. I mean, there are many reasons why we might do a closure, even though our enrollment is growing, based on the condition of our schools and the enrollment of our schools, and our ability to put a core program in those schools with a number of students who are able to attend. So with conditions, right, with conditions, I don't think I would take, I would not totally dismiss closures as a, as something that we should look at and think about during the process. And then I also would agree with Ruth. And some of the issues I think that SACET is looking at will have a huge impact on our enrollment in different schools. Again, you know, you've got that 34% that are moving around. So I think we have to continue, we have to continue to push SACET along and try and get to, to some decisions there, so that we can use those as we're considering what enrollment might look like across boundaries, as we're trying to adjust the boundaries.
They're meeting all summer, so they're, they're working hard.
Yeah, I know they're, I know they're working hard, and I appreciate that. So, but I just, it's chicken and the egg here. So we've got to keep both of them moving. We got to move too.
Right, we are.
Bobby?
So on the discussion of school closures, I think the way I might word it, it is that this process in no way is intended to be a forum for school closures. It may be that as we go, there's some reasons why it would make sense in terms of, again, I, I look at a couple of our schools where we have dual campuses. And, you know, if we are able in a future bond to build a school and bring them together, you know, that might feel like a school closure to some, although it's moving a community back together. There's, there's reasons why it could make sense. But I think it should be very clear from the start that we are not going into this process for the purpose of trying to close schools. It's, it's actually just the opposite. We are, we have a very wonderful problem of expanding enrollment, which is great.
Right, I would agree with that.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what we're doing. And one of the things that I was looking forward to toward the end of this was a process. Okay. And, and a process for doing closures, if we do them based on the bond. So a full process, not just a process for what we're going to use in the next 10 years.
Right. And this is the kind of space, ideally, district leadership and parents and the community have a robust conversation over X period of time. And you can design a very textured if-then kind of scenario. You can set triggers for all kinds of things. So it may be that your example of you have a bond, and you might build a new school and consolidate. Well, that, you know, if a situation like that comes up, you might set in your policy somewhere a trigger that if that occurs, then we'll take an intentional look at it. Or if there's a school that's too, based on, you know, the ideal-sized school, and that might be a trigger. If, you know, you pick, and I, I'm making all this up right now, it's a hypothetical. So you pick the ideal size for a K-8 school, and if it gets X percent above or below, then that triggers some kind of a review process that focuses attention on it. You can build a system like that based on policies that you approve over time. I mean, we're not there yet. And that's where some of your, your key things that are on the table and off the table right now will help guide that in the months ahead as some, some kind of large scenario choices about how you might move forward as those get developed and then, and then brought to you.
Thank you.
And I think we do have that to a certain extent. I mean, we do have, I mean, and I would say size ranges, we really need, it's never going to be the one size, right? But I think what staff has worked at is sort of the, the range, and sort of the where, and, and the, we've seen those charts where there are schools that the building cannot fit, and it's over-enrolled, or those where the building can't, you know. So there's all these different gradations and combinations. So I think they have done that to a certain extent, and there has been in the policy of, you know, requests that, and there is annually a look at that, and sort of, that's where we have the list of, of here's where we really need to figure out what we're going to do. So we do have some of that, but it's never been, again, it's always, in the previous years, it's been in the budget crisis and/or declining enrollment crisis. We're in a very different place, so it's resetting. And so that's, it's come from, similar to with the bond discussion of, to get us into a place of this is a positive thing, that we are building new buildings, and to envision what we can do to get it out of the loss, because we've all been in sort of a, a loss and deprivation and takeaway mode in many different dimensions. And how can we, as a community and as a district, flip that together and, and be in a positive place? This is about having better, stronger schools for our kids.
That's right.
This isn't a plot to take away and make things worse, right? And acknowledging the history and, you know, all kinds of, yeah, the, the history and the, and the pain and the missteps of the district, totally not trying to whitewash that, but how can we move forward?
Did you have something, Steve?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm with Matt on the school closure issue, I think it's, and I guess with kind of what Ruth and Bobby are saying too. We need to make that upfront, because that's the trust issue. And we have to have that trust issue, and I'm not sure, I think that maybe, we know who gets their schools closed all across this country, and what an issue it is now. If you pay attention out there to what's going on in America on school closures, and school closures to privatize and so forth and so forth. By saying that upfront, I think it allows people to participate in a, in a different way than if they're worrying about what you're really trying to do. What are you really trying to do? That's why I'm trying to, I, trying to get us to separate the physical out front, because we need to be transparent on the other things for that trust. We need to be transparent, are we, are, are we, I mean, back when I was on the school board in 1979 to 83, one of the things, when the transfer process was, you could transfer as long as you didn't increase the racial inequity. And it was racial inequity at the time, and it was basically black-white. It wasn't, I mean, with anybody else, really, it was black-white issues. And, so you could transfer only under those conditions. And it was very clear to everybody. They knew. It wasn't, it wasn't this little, hey, I got my kid in there, and I know how to work the system to make sure it works. I mean, that's true equity, right? Working the system to make it work is not necessary, it should be clear what we're doing economically. Are we, and we can't have it clear until we get the physical aspects situated, and then we say, okay. Because this is beyond reasonableness almost, to, to begin to go into social, this social engineering. Is, I mean, we should be working on world peace next. I mean, it's just, it's that complicated, that messy, that much of a, and in order to do it, we need to get the solid stuff that we can do first. That's why I pushed that, I think, that's what I think.
By the way, Steve, I'd be happy to join you in working for world peace every single day. Whether or not we can achieve. But I guess, as I, as I try to think, any, any, the, the things we choose to put on or off the table, as I'm looking through the list that's just kind of been generated here, becomes kind of an artificial boundary. So if we, for example, take off grade configurations, then we've kind of forced that issue as, as something not to look at, and we can make decisions that might change had we considered it all. And what I'm, what I think I hear, or what I'm hoping for, and what I think I've heard my colleagues say is really trying to do this in a way that is holistic, that actually takes those factors into consideration. It makes it more challenging. But to not consider all the data is intentionally putting on blinders. At the same time, if you don't put on some guardrails or some rails, we could spend the next 20 years going down rabbit hole after rabbit hole to not get a decision. So one that, one that's in my head is something that I might be interested in trying to, to kind of contain is, somebody mentioned moving or changing programs. I think that I would be personally okay if, if part of the discussion is, does it make more sense to move a program from here to there? But I'm not sure what the thought is behind changing a program. But I would worry that what we will do is draw out a whole bunch of people that will say, well, the reason why this school is under-enrolled, because it doesn't have program X, Y, or Z. In which case, I think that we should consider that, but it should be outside of the boundary review. It should be part of our normal expansion discussion programs. Because we have a lot of interests from a lot of different people about a lot of different programs. So I guess I'd be curious to hear what other folks, at the same time, as you pointed out, or I think Mr. Porter pointed out, there are certain, certain parts of our city that don't have equitable access, or haven't had equitable access to some of these programs. So that has to be part of the consideration. So I'm, I'd be curious to hear what people think about that. Or not.
Thoughts?
Do you mean, do you include in there like the smaller programs in terms of within a school? Sometimes you have the special ed program or ESL program, and it's too small maybe to, to, and then we end up moving some child, uh, childs in special ed moves for time, for every year, they move to a new school, or ESL around, that type of stuff. Are you, you're talking about that too? I mean, because you have the bigger programs, the immersion programs are big. And once you get Japanese immersion, or Spanish immersion, or whatever, it's big.
Well, that's a, that's a whole nother discussion. Let's, for example, say that an immersion program decides they want their own facility. Like, do we, is that part of the discussion?
Yeah.
But I, I guess I'll just say, since you brought up special ed, is that I, I agree with your earlier statement about trying to find a system that makes sense that they can, if, if at all possible, or the closest possible to their neighborhood school.
State.
Which, again, is part of SACET's recommendation.
Right. And then how do you work with siblings, so that parents don't have to drive between two schools? Because they're siblings. But I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how we, because again, if we, I worry that if we open up boundary review to also the, the array of programs that we have, it, that will be a really even more challenging than we're already looking.
Bobby?
So I think as an overarching thing here, I would prefer that we not end up having a lot of discussions about things that aren't relevant to our students and to their student success. So again, I think about things like a robust program in every school as being critical. What we often find when we're talking about changes in boundaries and the rest is all of a sudden, people are talking about their home values and, you know, other issues that are important, and I totally get it. But what I think we need to be focused on is making sure that there's a great option in every neighborhood. And, and that most importantly, the, the boundaries make sense in terms of offering a robust program to our kids. So does it make sense to have a school here with 800 kids? Because people want that in terms of their home values and 400 here. Somehow, we need to keep the discussion focused on kids and what we want for our students and student success, and getting to graduation rates and so. And that's just one example, but my guess is we'll have other examples that come up as we go. And I'm not saying it's not important. It's just, I don't necessarily believe that's what we should be basing boundary changes on.
Well, I, I agree, and a corollary to that too, would be if there are, or when there are objections based on fear or opposition to changing a boundary and going to a different school, then how can we have, rather than sort of this, this, this fight over that issue, and, and parents mobilizing around that, how can we have the discussion about, well, what is it that you're fearing, or that you see as a lack in that potential destination school? What are these issues? What, what's the quality of the program? What would need to be different? Is this perception? Is it reality? And really, and again, that's, gets back to what I was saying initially. We, the bottom line here is that we need to have schools that every school is a go-to school. And there isn't this fear that, oh, if the boundary is changed, and I have to go to school X, then my child will have less than, or there'll be a loss, or there's something wrong. And there's a whole spectrum of reasons and issues there. And the SACET, SACET again, has been wrestling with a lot of those throughout their work. But I think to just include that as just a real transparent conversation, rather than spending all the energy on fighting over what's, where's the line going to be drawn? And, and it's, it's really, let's get to the core issues here. What are we really talking about? What are the, what are the real concerns, and how can we address those? Or if it's perception, then say, here's what the reality is, and here's the decision we're making, and everyone may not agree, and we're going to move on, because this is what's best for kids.
Right?
I just, I think one of the challenges with that, like, it sounds so, but as I talk to folks around the city, what, what we wind up with is individual families, however people define that, and what those individual families' values and preferences are. And so to design a system where everybody, where everybody fits into one size or one spot, or say, this is a good neighborhood school, and if you don't like it because of X, well, that's too bad, because that's not a valid reason to not like it. That's, I, I think, the part where I get challenged, is that individuals have, have a lot of different priorities in how and why they choose schools. One person's desirable schools, and other person's, I'm never going to that school. And so how do we balance that and engage with folks to have conversations? Because I, I think of the enrollment balancing conversations. I do have, some of my favorite parts are when, when people got together and had those discussions with each other, and saw the, the different viewpoints from different peoples, and they realized it wasn't as simple as they had first thought. Meaning, not as simple that there are just other values that somebody else will uphold that a school may or may not have. And so I just highlight that as, as an example of some of the challenges. I think that no matter what we, as we list out our priorities, let's, let's say that neighborhood schools... I think that no matter what we, as we list out our priorities, let's, let's say that neighborhood schools is the highest value. Or let's say that robust programming or the best programming is the highest value. At some point, another value is going to come in conflict with that value. And where do we land as a board? Which one do we hold in the highest values, the important thing? So is it, is it, well, we know that actually if we move these students here, but there's a physical boundary there, we, we just can't do that. Is it physical? I think that's what I, I hope that we can eventually get to is, as we have these discussions, where, what priorities do we value? And then, as Bobby pointed out, knowing that there might be a time or two where there are exceptions, such as Skyline or some other school that is in a really unique situation.
Well, and again, it is in existing policy, right? I forget the exact order of the list, but it talks about the major arteries. It talks about proximity, transportation, walkability, and that you try to prioritize those. So we have some of those pieces there. So again, I mean, you're exactly right. We're not going to be able to, we need to be able to have a transparent and rational basis on which to say, we have made our best effort to provide the best leadership, teaching quality, program, facility that we can in every single zip code and every single school. And, and that's the conversation. I just want it to be a reality-based conversation of what, what's the situation? And yeah, of course, it's not going to fit everyone exactly right, so.
Others?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I like your idea, Greg, about prioritizing. That's at least one way to think about the complexity of it. So it's, might be a good place to move sometime.
It's in our policy.
That's what we're talking about. Others?
Question three? Or do you have questions that you need from us?
Well, I think one thing to highlight is that, maybe two things. This is an evolving conversation. And regardless of how, regardless of what kind of scenarios you ultimately pick around boundary review, there will be a continuing public conversation about this. And so part of, part of why we've been engaged is to at least design one scenario that has a very robust public engagement with all kinds of different people and groups in this community. And to design it in such a way that groups that historically have not been able to participate would have a chance to. And, and so how, and there's a lot of ways, specific hows and details and tactics and strategies that could be part of a very robust community conversation. And that takes time to do and there are urgent issues. So there'll also be a scenario that's faster, shorter, and there's trade-offs, right? And so, you know, how those get designed and how they get framed will take a lot of work. And that's part of why we're trying to get a sense of what some of the key preferences that you have. And we're doing similar meetings in the next couple of weeks with district leadership, same kind of thing. And at the end of that, we'll have a sense of, of kind of where the different parts of the organization are, where the overlaps are. And then that helps our team design some scenarios, some kind of policy choices about how you want to move forward. So this is based on what you know now, right? And based on what the community knows now. And over the next six months and the next year, two years or ten years, there's a lot of opportunities for a lot more information to be shared and for people to have conversations to sort out how you want, how you, the district and the community, want to do boundary changes in an ongoing way. And as many of you, you haven't said it explicitly, but boundary review is not necessarily the right tool to use in every situation. It touches many situations and maybe in some scenarios it can help and others it won't. And I think for many people in the public, the distinction between enrollment and transfer and boundary reviews is, I mean, it, it's inside baseball, right? And I mean, like for me, I went through K-12 and I thought I knew a lot about it. And it turns out I, you know, nineteen eighty-eight was a long time ago when I graduated high school. And the K-12 system has changed a lot, as I'm experiencing with my fifth grader and eighth grader. So it is, so it highlights to me how the K-12 system is evolving, how the community's evolving. And how you choose to engage the community over time is going to be really important. So I'm sorry, I kind of went off track there. But let's move to our third question at, oh, yes, sir.
I have a question before that, if it's okay.
Yeah, sure.
We're kind of looking at what we want to do. What's the, I'd be curious about what the negative aspects that we're trying to eliminate now are. For me, that's, it's an, you know, that's kind of the way I analyze anyhow from the negative side. Didn't do it here, but is, what negative aspects are we trying to eliminate? I mean, that's, that's as important to me in a way as what positive aspects are we trying to get. I'm not, I, I thought, I think that might be helpful too.
So yeah, I mean, for me, it would be having an imbalance in the enrollments across the district so that we aren't able to offer the program equitably, or we have struggled to do that. Despite, and we are differentiating in our budget, but it's really tough if you have a school that's severely under-enrolled, as well as the difficulties for teachers and students and staff when a building is over-rolled. So that's one, right, to mitigate that. To have a coherent process that we, that again, is transparent, that's reliable, that makes sense, even if you don't agree with every single decision of that process, rather than sort of going from one sort of isolated hotspot every few years and trying to go in and not really ever having a, a clear framework for how those decisions are made. Those would be a couple of things. Does that make sense?
Eliminating the hotspots, oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, not having a coherent and, and.
Inequity issues.
Holistic process that is applied in a way that makes sense across the entire district, rather than in, in one-off situations.
So the equity issues, now we have issues that, what's the equity issue problem?
I think you, so I think you've actually addressed a number of what the issues are we're trying to solve, framing them in what are the things, so the, actually having enough students to sustain a viable program, equitable access for students, I think, stability, where you've got some desire for stability in, in the community. We've got buildings that are overpopulated for the size of building and underpopulated for the ability to actually offer a strong program. I mean, so there are all those, but you guys have all, you've framed it in how do we address those things? But those are the things. And the need for a transparent, ongoing process. So we've tackled this as a district cluster by cluster, which then doesn't give us all of the potential solutions and it doesn't give us a holistic view. So this is the first time that we know of, that we are actually looking at this as an entire district process, as opposed to problem-solving and troubleshooting cluster by cluster.
Or school by school.
Or school by school, yeah. So we've done small groups of schools even within a cluster that have the particular issues, so.
I mean, is the social, is the social aspects of the schools a problem? Like, do we think that it's a problem that you have one school that's economically pretty large, pretty different from another school? Is that a problem? Do we see that as a problem? What about the racial issues, having, are we looking for a certain percentage of kids? Or are we meeting up, I don't know. I mean, do we see particular social problem? I mean, those are like elephant in the room problems maybe we're talking about here. I mean, do we see that as a, is that a problem within our system now? Do we, I mean, do we look at it? I have my idea about it, but.
I think that would be part of the conversation to have. It's like, is that something where, is that where we want to go as a community? Based on sort of the geographic and, and housing racial and economic segregation in our city? Is that something that we want to try to tackle with our policies and with our boundaries or, or not? Sackett has had a lot of discussion, again, around if you have folks in a neighborhood who are not attending their neighborhood school, again, the neighborhood school, yeah, and the focus options are not necessarily reflecting the diversity of the, of the neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood. Of course, the huge issue of gentrification and displacement in north and northeast Portland and poverty and folks of color being pushed to East County. So it, I, I mean, I think, again, all of these are things we should be talking about with the community.
Right.
Because there aren't any easy answers.
I think the way that I think about it, Steve, is, and I, and we've all said this, I think, in one way or another, is that we're all in, you know, our major goal is to have a strong school in every neighborhood with a robust curriculum. And then the next step is, is to figure out what the triggers are when you know you don't have that. What triggers can we pull in order to see, to look at a boundary change? And then after that, it's the process. So what is the process that we go through? And by having those triggers or policies in place, that provides the community with knowledge about exactly what's going to happen when we, when a school reaches a certain, or there's a certain trigger that has to, to pull or there. And then the community will know what the, what the outcome is going to be or what the process is that we're going to go through and they'll know how they're supposed to engage. I mean, that's what I'm hoping that we get so that it's very transparent to the community and their, and I think that that, having that transparency with the community about when a trigger will be pulled and what the process is, I think will help alleviate some of the tension and concern about, about how we've done these in the past, so. Sure, Greg.
I'll just speak for myself. I guess I don't, those other socioeconomic or racial issues, to me, they in, of themselves, aren't the problem. So it doesn't matter how many, I, I don't feel like I'm entering this process trying to fix anyone.
That's why I was wondering, what are the, what negatives do we see?
Right. To me, again, it's that, it's the, the right size of a facility to be able to offer a strong program. And that's why I think we started with what, what is the right size? I think that as we go along, we may, as you pointed out, Jim, that this is an evolving process. We may learn additional information as we go along and may want to look at additional things. But to me, setting out again was what, what the superintendent said, is that we learned in our other enrollment balancing, when we were in budget cuts and crises, that looking at it cluster by cluster didn't provide a fuller, a bigger range and it exacerbated some of the inequities that we saw throughout the district. And so how do we take a full district view to address those in one, in one of those? And I, I haven't heard anybody say that my school has too many poor kids or my student has too many African-American, like that, that's not the issue we're trying to, I feel like I'm trying to address with this.
But at the same time, we need to be able to allow race to be part of the conversation and not, and not avoid that or skirt around it, so.
Sure.
And if I could just, I actually really liked Steve's question, Steve's question about what are we trying to fix? Because it's a, it's a very simple talking point then. And I think it's easy for people to kind of grasp on why we're having the conversation at all. But I do think, I, I would generally agree that I, I, I am not necessarily looking to socially engineer our schools in terms of who ends up there. And I believe that we do already have a, at least a start of a plan in place to address if a school ends up being a more high-poverty school or a school that is a, serving more historically underserved students. We already have a budget process in place to help us provide more supports to that school with our eight percent set aside. And it may be that once we go through this process, we end up changing that number. I don't know. But I, I think we have other ways to address and provide supports and assure that every school has robust programs and supports for kids, so.
Some, some small schools do very well because they have outstanding teachers, I think, particularly in, particularly in the primary grades. I mean, one of the things that happened, in my opinion, in when we switched to the K-8 system, was that we had an, that I felt the school district was working pretty well in the K-5, but not in the middle. And it's an argument that we don't hear much. You can have a small little K-5 and if you have really good teachers and really upbeat principal and, and you have a, a little bit of program in there, it can be a wonderful school for people. They'll kill for it. But so, I'm not sure it's all the, the robustness of the full program in the K-8s. Though I agree that you, it's more in the middle grades, the robust. But when people talk about their schools, to me, they always talk about, almost upfront, the special program things. They don't say, you know, my kid's passing those tests. They, they always say, you know, we got music and, and we have this really neat thing that we do and we go on these field trips and we do these things. So I don't, I was just tossing that out, not that I agree or disagree. I was just putting that into the conversation.
But then part of the conundrum is that, that when you do have those additional children, then you have additional resources to be able to provide those field trips, so it's, it's.
Yeah, if you do it, you got to do it though, when you have the funds to do it.
And I think the other thing that we've tried to look at is if a program becomes so small that we're ending up having to subsidize to just, you know, have basic administration, basic support in there, then all of a sudden, it is, it does become a district issue rather than just a school-wide issue, so.
It's not a, it's not a robust program and it's not enough students and it's a drag on the district and other places, so.
Ruth? So I have a sort of a process question, kind of getting back to our next steps here. Would be helpful for me, I think I said this before, but just say it again, if just be able to see kind of staff's kind of current list of where are the most severely under and over-enrolled schools? I know there's been discussions in different communities about what are some different possible solutions to those? So that we can just kind of get the lay of the land here, about what is those ranges, sort of the most immediate issues? Again, given that we don't want to just go there, we've been saying that all along, that's one of the key points here. But could there potentially, not to try to have it both ways, but be some sort of hybrid approach where there might be some solutions that won't necessarily take a year longer, however the longer option is, to get to something that is reasonable and rational or perhaps, I know we often, we don't, folks aren't very, nor should we be fond of, you know, short fixes that then we have to change again. But what, just what are those possible, what are the situations and what are some potential solutions that staff and community have been, have been looking at? That would be helpful for me before we kind of decide we're going to do this all super fast or all in a longer process.
Right, right. Well, I know the, the families at Beverly Clary who now have their children in three different schools because of overcrowding in the last, I think they went from four hundred students to over seven hundred students in just a couple of years. I know that they have a Band-Aid right now. The next move they want is not another Band-Aid. They'd rather stick with their current Band-Aid until we get it done right. So I agree with you, if there's something that we can do to help them right away, that's great. But I am going to move us to question three because according to my schedule, we have ten minutes, but I think I can give you a little more time than that, Jim.
Terrific.
Important question.
So our last question that we're really wanting to get a sense from you is, at what specific points in the process should you as a board play a formal role in district-wide boundary review? I mean, we're assuming that when you guys are active in the community, you'll be engaged in the community as you normally are. But from a formal role as a board, you know, how often do you want to be involved in this process?
Bobby, you want to start?
I would propose that we, as a board, consider a board committee that works with you on this going forward. I think if we had three of us, one of the things that it might do is help the community see our work. And it would keep at least three of us highly engaged throughout the process. It would allow a fourth board member, depending on what's going on, to enter the conversation because these could be publicly viewed meetings. To me, this is such a huge undertaking that it could be a really good opportunity for us to stay engaged in a really consistent way and hopefully be providing feedback to you every step of the way.
I have a little different perspective. I feel like this is, because it is so huge and unprecedented, that it's important for the entire board to have those reports and that engagement. So maybe there could be, and again, this, you know, we're about to have our summer retreat where we look at our priorities and goals for the coming year. So given the range of major issues we want to take on and what we want to accomplish in the coming year, to have that conversation about what would those increments be? Where there would be a setting like this, a study session where all of us, sitting as the committee of the whole, would hear progress report information as well as, I mean, if we wanted to have a few folks designated to really commit to going, like between them going to all the community meetings, for example, and having some form of reporting back, because it will be logistically impossible for all of us to go to every single meeting. So there could be maybe that kind of combination. But it's, to me, it's important, rather than having it delegated off to three people and then something of this magnitude, to then come back only at the end or when things are fairly far down the path to the whole group. I would prefer that we get the information and weigh in. I would prefer that we get the information and weigh in at key points as a committee of the whole.
And just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting that we would come back to the board only at the end. I was suggesting that we would have a committee engaged all the way through with certain data points where the whole board would have discussions.
Right. Points to weigh in? Yeah, great. Just waiting for someone to jump in there.
So I don't know that I have a specific time, like once a month, or something like that, because of the workflow, but it seems like a really significant piece of work. So more often than less often, I guess. And part of the reason I say that is because in our designing of a process for this, I think it's really important, I appreciate your question about what role do we want to play, because there have been other times where we set something in motion, and as you point out, that processes are evolving, they're ever-evolving. And as processes evolve and take turns, if we're not involved in that or being intentional with those decisions, we can get to the end and not have a product that we're ready to support, or feel good about, or feel like we can represent to our community. Because it really is, it is a conversation with our community, about what, how do we want our schools, what do we want from our schools, and what does that look like? And so, I'll just put that plug in, it's not specific about, like, again, I don't know that I can say monthly or something like that, but it has to be regular, and I would even maybe say a little bit more regular than what we've seen with the enrollment and transfer.
Steve, do you have something to add to this?
No, no particularly. I like Bobby's idea of a committee, because I think it does engage us as we go along, and because there's a lot of other things that come up, and so I would support that. But I also think that we need to have regular feedback on what's taking place, so we can have time to ask questions, not just have reports.
Right. Matt?
So whatever form it comes in, whether it's a liaison role, or participants and community, or as participants and community meetings, or via a committee, I think something I found really valuable in the past is that board member perspective of, here's what I heard, because sometimes that's a little bit different, and it's from a different lens. And I think that's, that's a valuable, valuable perspective. I, I agree with Greg, you know, what I was thinking was early and often, as much as our schedules and our time allows, is probably how we need to be involved in this. And frankly, because this is, this is the kind of legacy work that, that can be really impactful to the district, both positively or negatively, in a very, over the long term. So it's, it's pretty important, and I think, I think us being involved from the beginning, and being involved often is going to be helpful. So, and I would be more than happy to do engage in what that participation might look like, and certainly myself, I'd be interested in participating across the district in these conversations.
And I just want to clarify one thing, I definitely wasn't talking about just an update report to us, but a discussion and asking questions as we go, just to clarify that.
So I think my feeling about where the board plays a formal role is similar to what Ruth is talking about. I see value in the kind of meeting we're having tonight, where we're actually doing a work session, where we can listen to each other's thoughts, kind of bringing in what Matt's talking about with hearing each board member's perspective, because we are all different, and each of us have different perspectives, or hear things differently. I think that's important, that we all have an opportunity to hear each other. And I'm also an early and often person. So as we look at our priorities next week, I'm hoping that all my colleagues will remember what we're talking about tonight, and what a high priority this particular subject has for us, and that it will rise way to the top of the priorities that we, that we're going to establish, and that we're going to work on hard next year. And then I think committee, community meetings are important for board members, and I'm sure we can figure out who can go to what, or who wants to go to which ones, and those kinds of issues. And as equally as important, going to those community meetings is reporting back to your colleagues about what you heard at that, those meetings. And again, that can either happen in a work session that we have, or it can also happen as you're going to those meetings and just writing written reports back to, back to everybody. So early and often, committee of the whole, listening to each other, work sessions, and then, of course, I think the board's major role will be in establishing the policies that come out of all of these discussions. So that's where I see the weighing in for us. Others? Any more? Well, that was a short one.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else you would like to hear from us, or any other? Clear as mud, man.
I have a mediation background, so I could ask questions all night, but I think we are, we have what we were looking for for tonight, so.
So can you go ahead and explain to us what your next step will be, and when we're going to hear from you again?
Next steps are, we're doing some facilitated meetings with the district leadership. There's three or four meetings that'll occur in the next kind of two and a half or three weeks. And again, kind of similar questions around, you know, boundary review, and what the primary purpose could be, and how it could support existing priorities that different departments have, and just trying to sort out the alignment of, you know, the things people already have to do, how does boundary review fit into that? And once we hear from all of that, then we'll have a composite of what boundary review looks like to the different parts of the organization, and then you'll see where it overlaps, and then that helps guide the development of some scenarios and some recommendations. So.
For how to, recommendations for how to move out into the community, or how to develop the policies, or everything?
Everything.
Everything.
Yeah, everything.
Excellent.
Do you have a sense of the timeframe of that?
Yeah.
The timing?
I think we want to be, well, as I said, the facilitated meetings will happen in the next couple of weeks. My guess is by mid-August, we'd be circling back, probably with the superintendent, saying, you know, kind of, here's what we heard, here's some key, you know, here's what everybody agreed on, here's where the differences are, you know, how do you want to move forward? And what are some of the broader choices? Because in our, in our June second report, there was those three options, and, but those are not, by design, they weren't fully fleshed out, because, you know, you couldn't flesh them out yet, but we want to be able to develop those more.
Great, great. Okay. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great discussion. Okay. Our next agenda item is a discussion, like for us, around the Smarter Balance Assessment Resolution. And I'm going to ask Director Atkins, who led that effort, a small task force, if you'd like to provide some background and process for the resolution that we have to discuss. And I want to remind everybody that this is just our discussion around this, is we're not having a vote tonight, but it's just a discussion by all of us about the proposal that the task force, and I should also acknowledge Director Buell and.
Belial.
Director Belial and Student Representative Andrew, who's up there watching us tonight, so.
So thanks so much. So just to kind of back up, and again, provide that kind of background and context from my perspective. So last summer's priority setting retreat with the board, we all agreed that the transition to Common Core state standards and the Smarter Balance Assessment was an important topic that we wanted to have on our, our list for the year. During PAT contract negotiations, as you recall, in the preamble that the Association had, there were a number of concerns and values stated around testing and other educational issues. And at that time, we made it clear that through our comments, and then also through the formal resolution that we brought forward in the fall, that while we agree with the values expressed in the preamble, the language did not, we felt, did not belong in the contract. So I just wanted to be clear, there's sort of this through line here, that now we are, as taking the opportunity as a board, to state our values and position on this issue through this board resolution. So meanwhile, over the course of the year, in addition to the contract negotiations, the states continued their preparation for transition to the new assessment, including piloting it at 24 Portland public schools. There's, of course, continued to be a whole lot of debate, both locally and nationally. I know Director Buell in particular has devoted a lot of time and energy and engagement on this issue, and expertise in that. And our district staff and teachers have continued working hard on professional development and implementation of the new standards. So the time is right, and it's really important for us as a board of the state's largest district to weigh in stating our position on the transition. So in, back in April, as you'll recall, Common Core came on the agenda for an update and a presentation from staff, and a board discussion, which was great, and, but at that point, both Director Buell and I had prepared separate draft resolutions on the issue. So at the end of that discussion, during which what I heard was the majority of the board expressing generally support for the standards, but a number of concerns about the transition and the new assessment and the implementation of it. So Coach R. Knowles asked myself, along with Director Buell, Coach R. Belial, and Student Representative Davidson, to work with staff, to come up with a single resolution for consideration at a future meeting. So staff organized a meeting with, with us, as well as a number of staff from Teaching and Learning and Assessment, and then invited in Gwen Sullivan from the Portland Association of Teachers. And we had what I thought was an excellent, productive, and really collegial discussion. We identified a lot of common ground and shared values and concerns, so that was great. So then following that meeting, I took the lead on putting together the resolution, my goal being to include and hear input from everybody, but to reflect what I heard as the majority position on this issue, since, of course, the goal is to have a resolution that will pass, by majority at least. So both staff and I worked on various, on different drafts, which have circulated by email to the board multiple times. Director Regan in particular has made a number of good edits on a couple of occasions, I appreciate that. So what with other issues that are on, were on our agenda, like the budget, and needing to approve the design for the high schools, there's been a bit of a delay in bringing this back to us, but here we are. So again, the plan is that we're going to discuss tonight, have a vote at our next meeting, I believe. So we have been circulating drafts by email for, since April, basically, for edits and input, and I hope we're fairly close to a final version, but tonight, for sure, it's still marked draft, an opportunity for any board members who haven't yet weighed in to do that, and for any final tweaks. I know Director Buell had some changes, which we have here, which I appreciate that, having that in writing. And what I would propose is that during the discussion tonight, that both staff and I take notes on the input and any suggested edits. We're not formally voting on amendments or anything like that, but it'd be great to get a sense just of the level of support, A, for the resolution itself, and B, for if there are any major changes that folks would want to see in it, to kind of get a sense of the level of support for those. And then what we can do, depending on how many issues or proposed changes there are, again, I, hopefully we're not going to spend a lot of time on small wordsmithing tweaks, you could always send those by email, but depending on the number of major concerns or changes, then we'll do our best to, again, you know, go back, maybe have another meeting of our group, and kind of figure out where we can land on a final, a final version to vote on. So that's just in terms of the process around the resolution itself, and what we're trying to accomplish from my perspective is that it makes a strong and clear statement of the board's values, that we do not believe in teaching to the test, that standardized testing is just one of many tools to be used in the assessment of student growth, and in the evaluation of teachers, that it should, testing should not dominate the culture or instructional time in our schools. Second major theme is that while we do not shy away from being held accountable, we want to ensure that any accountability measure for our students and schools is reliable, valid, and has been adopted with a culturally responsive lens. And then the resolution lays out a number of issues and concerns around the state's transition to the new assessment, including funding for professional development and technology, again, ensuring validity of the test, providing sufficient accommodations for English language learners and students with disabilities, and it calls on the state to not use the Smarter Balance Assessment for punitive labeling or sanctioning. So obviously, we cannot control through this resolution or other means, the actions of the state and federal government, but it is important that we weigh in with our values and concerns, and to make clear to our staff in this building and in the schools, that we know that they, along with the students and families, need support during this major transition, that we want high standards for our students, but that we also want to ensure that our students love learning, and that that is what is happening in the classroom. So thanks for the opportunity to share that background and my perspective, and I'm just looking forward to the discussion.
So discussion, then. Bobby?
Before we go too far, and thank you very much for that framing, I'm on the Oregon School Boards Association, and I was just at a National School Board Association meeting, and I will try to get a copy of this document that I was going to read from, but this is from the National School Boards Association Center for Public Education, put out a publication called Understanding the Common Core Standards. And the reason that I wanted to kind of do this extra framing, if it's possible, is they say that the public remains mostly unaware of the new standards, or how they will affect schooling in their communities. And so I just wanted to take a moment to just kind of give a little bit more background on what Common Core standards even are, and I'm just going to skip through a couple of little things here. The Common Core state standards are academic benchmarks intended to define the knowledge and skills that high school graduates will need to be successful in college and careers. The standards have been endorsed by a whole variety of organizations, including National PTA and both of the national teacher unions. The Common Core standards establish grade-level expectations specifically in math and English language arts, so we're not talking about the broad spectrum, but it's in those two areas, so it's a little bit more specific there. Internationally benchmark, so that all students are prepared to succeed in our global economy and society. The Common Core is not a curriculum. It's a set of standards, it describes the knowledge and skills students are expected to develop, it doesn't prescribe how to teach them, and I think that's a really, really important thing. As a parent, I certainly know that I hugely appreciate the creativity of teachers in our classrooms, so we obviously want to maintain that. The difference in Common Core is the attention paid to high-level skills, like thinking critically, applying concepts learned, communicating well, using evidence, including data, beginning in very early grades. And one of the things that's, I find really interesting, is that the Common Core English Language Arts standards assume that reading and writing will not be the exclusive responsibility of English teachers, but instead, it is assumed that these skills will be taught across all subject levels, and grade levels, and grades. So anyway, I just wanted to share a little bit of that, because I think it helps to remind us what we're talking about and what we're not talking about, so, for whatever that's worth, and then I'll engage in the conversation otherwise, but I just wanted to help.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
With that additional framing, and I'll try to get this all to you.
Comments? Steve, you must have, you've got an amended resolution here, so why don't you go ahead?
I kind of took the, I wasn't real happy about how we went about this, because I wanted to stay in the committee, that we had kind of, I don't know if we'd formed it, but it was the committee, and it had, for instance, it had President of the Portland Association of Teachers on it, it had Melissa Goff on it, and she was chairing it up. So I thought it was a really good committee. Greg, were you there? Greg, and we had the student representative there, and I wanted to go through that committee and end up with, with what we came out with. I was willing to come out and argue it through and come out with, because there's this huge, this is a complicated issue. I mean, I've read hundreds of articles on this, and I've talked to hundreds of teachers, probably, about the Common Core. And it's, it's, it's not necessarily that the Common Core is this evil thing, it's really the reverse. It's just not necessarily that the Common Core is this great thing. It's, you can sit and you can go through the Common Core and find some pretty interesting things. If you went out and talked to all our teachers, you would have teacher after teacher say, yeah, I kind of like this part. I mean, the new NEA, the new NEA president said herself, you know, I really like the Common Core. That was the NEA president. But she also said, the testing needs to, we need to get rid of that. The testing is horrible, what we're doing with children and how we're using the testing. The Common Core's not, it's, you know, decent. It's not a salvation, or even close to a salvation, it's just another set of standards. Nobody has ever, standards have never been proven to educate children. And it's not that it's not a curriculum, there's all sorts of curricular things in there, that parts of speed. Parts of speech is in the Common Core. I mean, it's the whole situation with the Common Core is not really, is it good or bad? It's no different than the standards we've had necessarily. It just has a better PR group of people. I mean, people are making millions and millions and millions and tens of millions of dollars on the Common Core, not, they're more than that, hundreds of millions of dollars on the Common Core. People are making it, and so they come out and push it, just like we pushed all these people, I'm walking downtown today, and the person, that person, that person is smoking. Well, why would anybody start smoking? Because they gets advertised and pushed and so forth, and it was a lot of young people. You're going, what the heck? Well, it's the same with the Common Core. And so, the Common Core, if we had this attitude about the Common Core, you would never hear me say a word about it. If in the district attitude, and this is what I would eventually like to get to, we would be able to say, you know, there's some good things in the Common Core. We need to look and see if there's some good things in there, and we need to add them in, if there are, into what we're doing. If we did that, I'd shut up and say, let's quit it right now. But that's not how it works in schools. In schools, it's, we're going to push the Common Core. I talked to a teacher who's in this school system. He was doing, he was in a little bit of trouble for his teaching, and so the assistant principal was in his room 36 times during the year, always pushing on Common Core, Common Core, Common Core, Common Core. Now, I'm telling you, doing good Common Core isn't going to make you a better teacher, really. That's not how it works, but that's how we, as a district, seem to be approaching it often, and it's not that we're any different than anybody else in the country. Everybody else in the country approaches it this way, and it's the wrong way to approach it. We need to approach it in a much more intelligent way. So, the question really, in a way, on the Common Core itself, is not, the stuff that the National School Boards Association puts out, and no offense, Bobby, I, but it's not right. It's just not accurate. It's not really, it is, if you read 200 other articles negatively, you'll say, oh, well, they said this, but that's not right. It's not, it's not put out that way, and is it doing any damage? In our high schools, the Common Core itself is probably doing some good things. How we're approaching it, and I don't mean implementing it, I mean approaching it, we're doing a lot of damage in the high school. But there's a, there's a real problem with the Common Core, and that's in the K-2, that particularly kindergarten. It's doing tremendous damage, because I talked to a principal a couple of months ago, and I walked into a kindergarten classroom, and and they had, it looked like a fifth grade classroom, and I, and this was a really good principal. I could tell by just walking around, all the little kids were waving at her, and she was a good principal, and I've had people speak highly of her. And I walked into that classroom, I said, and to myself, this looks like a fifth grade classroom, this is kindergarten, and we walked out of the classroom, and I said, geez, I didn't see any player yet. She says, kids can play at home. That's the Common Core. They're changing the structure of how we're dealing with kindergarten, which then moves into the other areas across this whole country, yet they didn't have anybody who ever taught in kindergarten in their entire lives involved in the in doing that. So, there's, there is destructiveness if you approach it wrong, which I think we're doing too much of. Okay, so that's step one. That's over here, though. That's not this resolution. This resolution is talking about the SBACK test. So, the, to begin with, the SBACK assessment does not, it doesn't, here's what it's not going to do for us. It's not going to give us a grade level reading assessment. Doakes kind of does that. If you look at the Doakes questions and you look at the 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 Smarter Balanced Assessment, it doesn't give us a grade level. It's not going to give us foundational skills in mathematics. It doesn't do that. It's not going to give us a writing assessment of our children. Can our children write? Well, if I'm a parent and I walk into the fourth grade or fifth grade classroom, I want to know if my kid, is my kid at grade level? Now, we have other stuff that does that, but are we doing it and thinking about it? I want to know, can my kid do foundational mathematics skills? I want to know, can my, can my kid write decently well? I want to know if my kid's behaving himself or herself. That's what I want to know. That this test doesn't do any of those things. What this test does is tell you if the kid can solve trick questions, which are related in some manner to some sort of reading strategies that came down from some group of people who weren't classroom teachers, had never been in school, had not taught in schools, and are making hundreds of millions of dollars on it. And they developed a test to tell if you're doing it. So, what do you have to do if you fail that test? If your kids are going to now fail that test, huge numbers of our kids are going to fail that test, we know that, they won't even let, they won't even let our Director of Learning and Teaching look at the test to see if it's any good, and yet we're supporting it and spending, probably in the end, we're probably eventually spending, because we're spending for each test, millions of dollars. And the district was based on what? Because we want to test the standards that aren't necessarily any better than any other standards we've ever had? I'm just saying, let's change our attitude about how we're looking at it and saying, why are we being pushed and suckering into this thing? Why are we coming in? So, yeah, you want to do Common Core? Fine, kind of do it and go through, and it's fine. It's not going to hurt things, as long as you don't over shove it right down teachers' throats and demand that that's what they do, and under all these circumstances, and think it's going to solve your problems, because it ain't solving anybody's problems. So, we spend all this time and energy on solving our problems, but we don't get any of them solved, and all this money. But the testing is is beyond that. The testing, this should be saying to the state, no, we ain't going to do this test. If we, we wouldn't do this test if we didn't have to, and we think you're making a mistake to ask us. We should be testing whether our children are at grade level in reading. We should be testing whether our children can do foundational skills in mathematics, and we should be testing writing, and then beyond that, we should not be really testing anything. We should be teaching children science and social studies and PE and so forth, and the idea, and what's happened, everybody in education practically goes overboard, where, yes, literacy is incredibly important, but to do literacy in PE, which is if you, and I can find you ones, we could go find literacy things in PE, what's the point of that? There's not really a point to it. We should be doing science in science, social studies in social studies, and guess what? Children will learn to read. We should be focusing on getting kids to read. So, we're spending millions of dollars on testing children in this state, and we can't even get librarians into our schools, which are proven to read. No one has proven that this helps one child. There's no research that says the Common Course Date Standards have ever helped one kid. And so, what I'm trying, all I tried to do was do two things with this resolution, and I'll stop here. I know it takes a long time, but it's, I'm sorry, it's a long time. It's a long discussion. I really apologize for it, but it is. But I was trying to do two things. One, kind of move out some of the education ease that sneaks in there when we have the administrative educational people write, and just kind of move that out. And the other thing was, this hardens it up a little bit. So, the the problem with it, for me, if you're really going to look at it and think about it, do you want to harden it up or not? Or not? I mean, if you want to harden it up, fine. I made it a little tougher and said, okay, this is a bad deal, we ought to, like that. I think you should leave the education ease out, the rigor and that kind of, those kind of words and stuff, but but hardening it up, it's fine. I tried to write it so it might actually be acceptable to people. I wrote one that would, that was the way that we should do it. I don't think we're going to do it that way, but this one might be acceptable, so that's where I tried to go. Thank you for that time. I really appreciate you taking it with me, allowing it.
Okay. Other comments? No?
I didn't get a chance to see your email today, so this was the first time I had a chance to see this.
Yeah, I know. I apologize for that, but I just, I was irritated about us not doing it in the committee, so I waited to the very end, thought we might get down to it.
I think, though, I really appreciated your comments tonight, Steve, and I, and I think there's a, I'd be interested, perhaps not tonight, but but to talk with you at some point about the role generally that standards play in in a classroom, in a district, because I think there is, and I don't think you're suggesting this, but I, anything different, but I think there is a role, and I believe you're right. Standards are standards, and and that's not what educates our kids. That being said, your comments, some of your your adjustments, I actually feel are completely completely on par. I would probably make some some adjustments, because I'm, I'm probably more aligned with, particularly in resolutions, let's, brevity is is good when resolving things, but one of the, number one, you suggest removing, the second line is, the pedagogy is designed to meet, which, by the way, if you were looking, really looking at wanting to eliminate the education ease, you would remove pedagogy.
Yeah, I was, I don't, I don't ever use that word. It's, I just left it there. I was trying to get.
I know, I'm kidding you. The pedagogy is designed to meet the needs of all students, and removing the rigorous standards of achievement and to meet the needs of all students. I think, I, I think the point is made that this is something that's designed to meet the needs of our students, and I think the clarity in that should be real, should be good for our superintendent enough to to follow, since this is a resolution directing our superintendent. And also, actually, you make that clarity of directing staff versus directing the superintendent. I would probably, in that first one, and I don't know if we necessarily want to go line by line here, or, and I apologize if that, but Steve has a few things that he, a few points, and I, it's probably.
I think we should just go ahead and go.
Okay. Okay. The rest of that, I think what has been written and what you are are saying are very similar. I think you give a direction, you know, for hence, or for example, teachers should not teach directly to the test nor spend inordinate amount amounts of class time on testing, except for some minor testing, minor test-taking instructions. I actually like the language around, and that assessments are implemented to maximize intended flexibility, collaboration, learning, and creativity in the classroom. I think, and and this might just be sort of my, a style difference for me, I like that a little better. I think it's, to me, it says the same thing. I think I get your point and what you're trying to direct in saying, hey, we need a specific example of this. I wonder if there's another area where we can provide a specific example, but that's my, that's my assessment of that.
So, just if I can clarify.
Essentially, I would, I would remove
Right.
The quote, the rigorous standards of achievement and to meet just that part out of your, your number one, and keep the rest of it.
Okay. Hold on a second. I have to, I have to, meet the rigorous standards. Okay, so designed, the pedagogy is designed to meet the needs of all students and so forth, and keep the rest.
I'll comment on that.
So, any other thoughts on that?
Just a second.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, Steve, you.
I was just trying to sneak that through there. I mean, I mean.
It's in red, Steve.
What I'm trying to, what I was trying to sneak through
I can read it without my glasses.
Is, we, the really, the stuff that you would like to leave in, those four things, don't say anything to me. I looked at it, I thought, what does that mean? It doesn't mean anything to me, really, because it's not a direct thing. I was trying to say, we need to tell our teachers and our principals, we don't want you teaching directly to the test, and that's what I was trying to sneak in there to go, because if you pass, if you pass this, man, I would hammer on this for the next year. No, that's not, we're not, you're not supposed to be teaching directly to the test, because we're doing that all over the place, not in every school, but in many of our schools, we're doing it way beyond where we are. So, I was trying to sneak that through, and so the question, I would say, if you want us teaching to the test, you think that's a good idea, then go back to the old language. If you think that we, we don't want, the old language isn't saying, I don't think it's saying that at all, really. I'm saying, we don't want to be teaching to the test out there, and we want to teach to the whole child, and testing is not where we are as a school district. That's what I was trying to say. If you want to say that's, that's not how we are, I have, that's not a problem for me. I mean, it's a problem for me personally, but.
I feel like that's where, I mean, that's why we have a pretty extensive recital section that lays that out.
But the recital is meaningless, right, on all these, because it doesn't have any, the recital section has no, it has no.
There also can be unintended.
It's like just like, you go back to the recital.
It's not, it's not, yeah, you go back if you do, but it doesn't direct the superintendent to do the recitals. I mean, I'd have rewritten the recitals if we were going to do it. It's just, that's why I didn't mess with it.
Yeah, and I guess to me, it's important to craft the resolves in a way that is not creating unintended consequences, which is why it was important for me to have this framed in a way that is not, I guess I just disagree that the message that would come from this, if we left the language there, is that we want to teach to the test, because that's not very clearly not.
Are you saying in your language, are we on record, that your language means
Right, so.
That we're directing the superintendent to tell our teachers and our principals to not teach to the test?
The PPS School Board.
And that we're going to, you're going to be in trouble with our new administrators if you are, if you've got teachers out there teaching the test, and and we're not, we don't want to do that? I mean, that's what I'm saying in mine.
The PPS School Board does not support teaching to the test. We believe, I'm reading C, we believe in teaching the whole child and in the ability of skilled educators to creatively instill a lifelong love of learning. In accordance with state law and our own values, standardized testing is only one of many tools to be used in the assessment of student growth and in the evaluation of teachers. Testing should not dominate the culture or instructional time in our schools. As a school board, we believe the ultimate role of assessment is to improve instruction, not to demean teachers or principals or to label students or schools.
Can we move that to the resolution? If we would move that to the resolution, I would stand up and give every, buy everybody drinks or something.
Let's tempt it.
Let's move that to the resolution, and then I'd go, oh, yeah, because so often we say one thing and then we don't do it. I don't want to do that anymore.
Let's put that on the list of supported change.
Put it in the resolution, and I'm going, okay.
Okay, so we've got that, as, so Matt had an edit that everyone seemed to be okay with to resolve number one. Steve suggests moving C to the resolve, so I'm just kind of creating a running list of.
Repeat it, maybe. I think you might want to repeat it, because it really does tell a story in the recitals. I mean, there's a reason.
Maybe there's a shorter version.
Well, put it in both places.
Okay, so repeat C in some, to some degree, so I'm just creating my little working list here. Okay, so then, Matt, do you want to keep going through? You were on a roll there. Steve had some proposed changes to resolve two and resolve three, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
Again, I, now, I know these are, I felt like these were two different ways to say the same thing.
Right, exactly.
Frankly, and and I, you know, I don't think Steve is trying to be sneaky by any means.
I think he is.
But I think, but I think it, there is a nuanced difference. One reads, the school board calls upon the state to provide the funding necessary to implement the Smarter Balanced Assessment effectively, including funding and time for both professional development and technology resource implementation. I think talking about that explicitly is is important, because those are some of the things that we've already heard are are concerns that we have.
We could go on all day about unfunded mandates from the state, but that's not the focus, that's not the topic of this.
And then Steve's portion is, the PPS School Board calls upon the state of Oregon to provide funding necessary to carry out any of the state's educational mandates, including standardized testing. I do kind of like the idea of of including something in there about other state mandates. Now, whether or not that is, I mean, this is a, it may be hidden in a resolution focused on on smart, the Smarter Balanced Assessment, but I think it is something that probably we could all agree on.
Right, oh, totally. I mean, we do have up in I, the last sentence, adding new unfunded mandates jeopardizes school districts' fragile ability to reinvest resources, et cetera.
Well, and I don't think, I don't think we have a board meeting that goes by that we don't talk about unfunded mandates from the state and.
Yeah, this is just.
So, this is, this is nothing new.
Can I comment here for one second?
Sure, Bobby.
I see David Williams in the audience, and I don't know David, and I'm not asking you to come up immediately, but would you look at our legislative, we, every year, we pass legislative policies and priorities, and I think this is covered in there really clearly already. And do you have that language, or would you be able to find it for us? Because it might be worthwhile looking at that. Because, again, I think it is something that we already have on record and that we share with legislators pretty regularly, that there shouldn't be unfunded mandates, so I guess I would be a little bit inclined to keep this more specific to this particular issue, but.
Can I, let me say why I changed it. That wasn't really a trick. The, the. The, the language here sounded to me like, you know, if you pay us, and, it sounds to me like this, in the language. Let's wait two years to figure this, to figure this out. And that's not what I think we should, that's where I disagree. I don't think we wait two years to see if it works. I think we tell them, this isn't, this isn't going to work. This is not going to work, I don't care if we wait 10 years. How did they, you know, and that's about what it takes, 10 years, normally, because the AYP is, and so this language kind of said, okay, if you'll, if, if you would just take care of the funding of it, we would be fine with it. That's kind of what I felt the language, and that's not what I was trying to, what I was saying is, none of it, I was trying to leave in that by going broader and saying, okay, because it's not going to work, I'm sorry, we all know that it's not going to work. And so telling them that it might work if you save us the money is not going to work. It's never, it's not ever going to work.
And I guess I disagree with that, so I don't know where others are.
That was, that's the difference.
So.
Thanks for clarifying.
For me, thank you, Steve. For me, I like the idea of being more specific, because I think it's stronger. To just say, any state mandate, that's, like I said, we do that almost every board meeting, and it's in a lot of our other, it's in our legislative priorities, it's other places. But I think that, given that this is an amendment, or is this is a resolution regarding the smarter balanced assessment, that we should be specific to that. I, I just think it's stronger language, so that's where I am. I'm not opposed to including the big one, I just think it weakens the, the resolution.
So, it, to me, it's possible to do an and rather than an or. I mean, if you, if you took Steve's language, it's not contrary to what we've already said.
Oh, yeah, right.
We could potentially say, "The Portland School Board calls upon the state of Oregon to provide funding necessary to carry out any of the state's educational mandates, period." The school board calls upon, or specifically, comma, "The school board calls upon the state to provide the funding necessary to implement the smarter balanced assessment effectively," blah, blah.
Yeah, I like that. That's a good solution.
So, I don't know if that would get a little bit closer.
Absolutely. I include that, and everyone is.
Yeah. Okay, I think, yeah.
Just say specifically.
Specifically.
And I, I don't have a strong preference, again, to me, it does sound, it's, it's the same thing in slightly different ways, but I wanted to clarify, Steve, I think you said that your number two sends a message that it's not going to work, it's not ever going to work. And I don't, I don't read that in number two.
No, I don't.
So I just wanted to clarify, if that's your intent, it seems that it needs some significant rewording.
I don't think anybody would, you want to significantly reword it, so that is the clarification?
No, I just, I just wanted to clarify.
No, I'd be glad to do that.
I made the comment, and I was like, I had to reread it again.
But to carry out any of the state's education, no, it, no, it wasn't sending that. I'm just saying that the reverse sent the other message, like it might work. Mine doesn't, my, I didn't write in here.
I'm actually hoping it will work.
You fools, this is never going to work.
Crazy news.
Because I, but I would, I mean, because it's the way it actually is.
Yeah, okay, so that's, thank you, that's great, okay, so.
Got enough on that one, Ruth?
I think, I think I've got that, and hopefully Amanda's.
Okay, Matt, we're back over to you. Back over to you, you actually are the one on the floor, at the floor.
Okay, so I think number three, and this is the last of the, the ones that, that Steve's made some recommended, recommended changes on. For me, again, it's maybe the same way, there are different ways of saying the same thing. One of the things that I do like is, I mean, Steve, you say it, I think, more emphatically, in that, quote, "Smarter balanced assessment, which does not measure grade level reading, basic mathematic, or mathematics or writing skills, and is an unproven test." I think in the, the version that, that Ruth presented, says premature use of an unreliable or invalid smarter balanced assessment could undermine, this is where, this is valuable to me, because I feel like it's, it's something that I've echoed.
This is actually Bobby's.
In my concerns, and, and I know Bobby is well, and others too, but undermined student enthusiasm for learning could create devastating outcomes for schools, and frankly, we've seen this, is, with Oaks and other things come out. It's, it's ridiculous, and could set schools and communities back years, if not managed well, at the state and local level, levels. I like the language around that, and if there was a design that could offer, offer sort of an and situation, both of these, because I don't disagree with the language, again, I feel like they're in many ways saying the same thing in different ways, but I would like to retain that, the premature use of an unreliable or invalid assessment could, could do these things. I mean, I, I would probably say will do, we are almost assured, it all but assures that these are the outcomes that we'll see. But I don't know how others feel about that, I don't know, Steve, how you feel about my comments.
I think there's truth in, and I'm still back at the issue of that, that premature use of an unreliable or invalid smart, well, the use of it, maybe even dump out the premature, because are they ever going to get to the point where, if you're just measuring the standards and not, I mean, that this is worth the time and money, and energy and everything that we're putting into it? Are they ever going to get to that point? So I, you know, I'm going to take out the word premature and put the use of an invalid, because it's pretty invalid at this point.
Use of an invalid.
And we don't know, because we won't even, we can't even look at it to tell.
Oh, just take out the word, take out the word premature.
Take out the word premature, yeah.
Sure, yeah, okay, so use.
Yeah, that was what we.
I would also take out the words, now that I'm looking at if assessments are used in this way, we should just take that out. We should say, "The school board requests that the state not use the smarter balanced assessment for punitive labeling or sanctioning of students, teachers, schools, or districts, period, specifically. There must be assurances of the reliability ability of the test. Use of an unreliable," yeah, actually, it works.
That's great, good. So otherwise, so those changes, and that's it for three? Okay.
So the only, the only other thing I thought was missing in here, Ruth, was something around the communication and, with parents, and I, I don't know.
But it wasn't here at one point, but there's been so many iterations and versions of this, so maybe it got dropped by accident. Because I thought we had that in there.
I don't see anything in the, I don't see anything in the resolution around it.
Okay.
And I'm trying to remember if I saw it in the recitals.
It wasn't in earlier versions, so I apologize, we need, so I agree.
Number eight.
Resolve number eight?
Oh, number eight. Okay, it is a number eight, but maybe it needs to be highlighted or written differently so that you, so that it's noticeable, because if it didn't pop out at you, then it didn't, then that means it maybe didn't work. So in the meantime, the school board asks the PPS staff, state, and other partners to continue to expand, continue to expand their efforts to inform and engage parents and community during the transition.
I think you need to, I think that should be, "School board directs the superintendent."
Okay.
Because we don't direct the staff, we direct the superintendent. And, and we can direct the state as well.
Well, unfortunately, we can't direct the state and ask the state.
We can ask the state.
And other partners to continue, and I could say.
I'd say we direct ones.
We might want to say something, rather than to continue to expand, to continue and expand their efforts.
Yes.
And I have felt like some, a lot of the communications materials really are just not very satisfactory, so, I mean, if, if there's a way that, and I don't know if the state is ever going to provide ones that are, and whether, you know, we don't necessarily have the capacity to, that one thing I thought was helpful was, our staff produced that video showing teachers in action, and.
Right.
Something like that, that's not, you know, that's really, or having teachers and principals come and, and talk to us, and have the public be able to hear how, examples and how it works, something like that would be, would be really great.
And then on number nine, you want to, I think, "School board directs the superintendent," again, taking out the staff reference.
Thank you.
Yep.
See if there's any others of those. And there's another one in number one, which we'll fix. Okay.
Yeah.
So, excellent, other, and, you know, this has been, there's so many different ways you can write all these different sentiments, so obviously, there's different ways we could wordsmith it, but if there's any other missing pieces, things that we need in there, Director Kurlor isn't here tonight, so I'll continue to, I mean, obviously, we'll be sharing the next iteration with everybody.
I guess one of the things that we should at least consider is, if you look at the recital J, many national organizations have called for a moratorium of at least a year. This is talking about sanctions, but I think there are many organizations that are calling for a, a delay, make sure districts are ready. We should probably at least talk about whether we want to weigh in there.
On the delay in the test itself, not just on.
Yeah, or whether the state, whether we would recommend that the state consider next year sort of a pilot year, rather than a, you know, you know, it's really gives us an opportunity to try it without it necessarily meaning anything, because we need to make sure we get it right. So I guess I'm still open to the suggestion, and it seems like more and more people are, are saying that, are we ready? Are we, are we as a state ready, and are we as districts ready? And I guess, you know, I look at, you know, technology and, you know, all, all kinds of things that districts across Oregon need to be making accommodations around in order to get this right. And, I mean, are you confident right now, superintendent, in terms of Portland Public Schools, that we can, that we are ready to at least pull off the testing part of it? Or, or would it be helpful for us to be saying to the state, you know, look at this as a kind of a pilot year, and, you know, we'll see where the kinks are across the state? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, I think that's.
I mean, we piloted in 24 schools this year, we don't have the results back from what the, you know, what happened in the pilot, yeah.
So, one of the things, and this is, you know, this is information that I received from a second grade teacher about who, at, at one of the schools that this is being piloted at, but, and this was a little shocking to me, frankly, is around technology, the need for a third grader to go from writing their, writing down their thoughts in a paragraph form to typing that.
Keyboarding skills.
And the skills associated with keyboarding is one. And, and now the need for identifying that as a skill set to begin teaching in kindergarten as, as students enter. So by third grade, it's no longer a barrier. Now, one of the things, when we talked about this as a, a number of weeks, probably months ago, was the, the digital divide that is very real, and there are kids entering our system that have no access to computers, none. And that doesn't change when they get to school, unless there's a classroom with a smart board, or there's a school that has iPads, or there's something like that, and that isn't everywhere. So I think there's, there's significant barriers that we have to, we have to consider, and that technology, and that's why I wanted to be explicit in that, that one, is certainly one of them, but I'm, I'm still wrapping my head around a, a, learning a, a typing as a skill set. I think by the time these students who are in junior kindergarten, the keyboard is going to be obsolete, frankly.
Just speak to it, just dictate.
That's, I mean, but we have to now teach that in second, or first, or kindergarten for a third grader to take a test.
We used to teach, we used to teach it all the time, back in the day.
Well, I took it.
Not in kindergarten, but a grade school.
I took it in ninth grade on a typewriter.
I took it in ninth. I took it in sixth grade.
And I'm glad I did.
One of the other things, Matt, that maybe I would be helpful, I know that the, that we're not really getting information back from the state on the results of our 24 schools that piloted it, but I hope that you or we have been collecting information from those 24 schools on where we tripped, or where we realized, oops, and we, it looks like we are.
I see Melissa Goff shaking her head.
That would be helpful information for us to have, and maybe to share with our community. And again, it's not the results, but it is the.
Well, and then just make, just make the really obvious point, this is not the last time we'll be talking about this topic, obviously, we'll be.
Right. Yeah, so the question is, how are we engaging with the users? We call those user stories.
Would you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Melissa Goff, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. The user stories that we've collected have been very much what Director Morton referenced. Part of our challenge in a district where, as we have, and this is not unique to Portland, but as we have seen our investments in education decline over time due to the economy, priorities have had to be set, some of which influenced technology purchasing over time. There has not been a large-scale investment by the state in technology. The reason it's important to note is not only the keyboarding aspect of whether or not that might be a defunct skill in a few years, but really practical pieces, such as our third grade students needing to be able to drag and drop on a screen, but they've never worked on a screen where they need to drag and drop. So, so we are, our user stories that we're collecting are not only telling us about the technology, what we're finding is the technology itself that we have available, we believe we're going to have enough technology available with the basic productivity that we need in order to test. The question is whether or not our students are going to be able to engage in the test and show what they know and are able to do, because they don't have access to technology on an ongoing basis throughout their career.
So, I'm hearing then potentially, so under K, we have a bulleted list of a number of, of issues, so it's sounding to me as if we're adding, adding, and we could work with you on how to word this and then run it by everybody, but something around the issue of access to technology and the grades leading up to third grade and having those skills.
And Melissa, could I ask one other quick question?
You have it.
One of the things I also understand is that the test is not being necessarily translated into every language for our kids, and so what are the accommodations that will be necessary?
So, there's a delay in that, and what we're still trying to ascertain is how much flexibility we will be having for our students who are emerging bilingual students. One of the advantages that we did have with Oaks has been that it has been available in more than just English, because of, as you were stating earlier, smarter balanced being developed and field-tested as late as spring, and us not, as a state, having access to the results of those field tests until December, translating those materials are, is not going to happen prior to the field testing results being analyzed. So it will be a limitation for our students, it will impact, it will impact us.
It also has a potential of dramatically impacting the test results then, for districts that have more emerging bilingual students versus districts that don't, and how, how is the state then going to measure that?
Yeah, and I think a very real question that I don't know if we have asked yet, but as you bring that up, would be wise for us to ask, is, we are, and your resolution addresses asking for a waiver from penalty, we are held accountable to participation in assessment. If we have a large number of emerging bilingual students at a site, and their native language is other than English, and there's not an assessment available in that language in their second year, third year, fourth year in country, and yet still struggling, what happens to participation? How do we get them started on a test where they may not be able to.
Right.
Engage in the initial instructions?
And I, I would say, as we continue, continue along this process, I mean, I consider this as a sort of a first step.
Right.
For our board, but as we continue along this, I mean, my, what I'm going to be looking at is, how are, how are these, these tasks disproportionately impacting those students that, that as a district we have already identified as underserved, as having, having.
Barriers.
Other barriers. And, and as a district, an organization I feel is responsible for removing barriers to student education. Are we creating yet another barrier to students? We're talking about kids who don't have access because of poverty, we have a disproportionate number of our kids of color within our district who fall within that category, we have students who are within special education, students who are English language learners, we have students who are on free and reduced lunch, these are all students who we've identified as our equity group, and that's, we've actually invested in them because of this. So how are we creating those additional barriers? And I think that's where, that's where my, my observation is going to be sitting squarely.
So could I suggest maybe under K, on the second bullet, is providing, of our list of challenges and concerns, is providing sufficient accommodations, a smarter balanced assessment for English language learners and students with disabilities, and maybe we need to strengthen that and add to that around the, the creation of new barriers to student success, or some, some wording along those lines.
Something around poverty and the ability or the access to technology. Something around poverty and the ability or the access to technology.
Well, state should not be making things worse or putting us in a position where we're, struggling even more to serve our underserved students. I, I don't have the wording right now, but.
Right, and by the way, the Oregon Educational Investment Board has an equity policy as well. And with the very similar student populations identified in that equity policy. So that's, that's the language that we should be holding OEIB and ODE accountable to when.
Well, maybe the thing is. Including that in the recital would be.
I like referring to the OEIB's language about that in the recital. I like that. And then also calling out that we don't want there to be barriers. So, and.
Well, and the fact is that our students, our English language learners and our high poverty students who haven't necessarily had the same exposure to technology could artificially end up doing way worse on this test when in fact it isn't measuring, which I think is a big issue, it isn't measuring what they know at all. It's measuring, you know.
How well they use technology.
Their lack of ability to use technology, or their, or the lack of translation services. And so that's, you know, and I think that's what our teachers are constantly saying to us is, you know, is it a valid test?
Okay, so that's, that's excellent, thanks. So could I get back to what Bobby raised as a question around, do we want to add to this, something around, because we have in here, "Don't use it for punitive labeling or sanctions," and don't.
I was, I guess I'm questioning how that's different than doing a moratorium and we're actually asking them not, we're not, we're not putting a, a time period on this. We're saying, "Don't ever do this," right?
I think, I think that there are certainly some organizations who are basically saying, "Don't do the test next year at all. We're not ready." And again, I'm not convinced that that's where we want to land. But I, but I do know if we use it, I want it to be a, a year in which we kind of figure out.
An evaluation opportunity for the test.
Yeah, maybe send information to the state on, you know, here's the things you need to do before we use this in any meaningful way as a, as a valid assessment.
So as part of that.
So it's, it's that question.
Right.
I, I don't know that I necessarily.
As part of that, you'd have to have the state actually let you know how your students did on the test.
Right. So what the pieces that we have in here is, we don't have in here, "Don't do the test." We have, "When you do this test, it needs to be valid. Don't use it for labeling and sanctioning." And don't, you can't use it right away as part of the teacher evaluation system, because there's no baseline data to compare it to. So that's the things we've said thus far. So I think it's a really good question of whether we want to say anything additional around even delaying the test itself, or strengthen the statement around making it more of a transitional pilot year.
I, I like the idea of a transition, transitional year versus don't do it. I mean, we've already piloted it in 24 schools, so I think that that, I mean, that's me. I think that we should continue down the road of, of testing the test, I guess. See how, see where the problems are.
So something like the first year of, of testing using the Smarter Balanced should be, I don't know what the exact wording is, something should be a transitional or a piloting year, and then you could move into request that you don't use it for sanctions and so forth.
I'm not sure that I would limit that to a year, Ruth. I think that you, maybe the, maybe the state needs to figure out the standards for when they consider the test to be ready.
But it needs to be in a transparent way, not the black box of the state deciding it's ready without any way of vetting that.
Well, again, you, the districts need to have access to those results, so that they can look at them and see why some of their students may have not, may have done poorly on it.
So I think we're all, maybe, I'm beginning to fade in my wordsmithing ability here, so I don't know if anyone else, otherwise, we can go back to staff and come up with something. And what I'm hearing is something around at the beginning of three that talks about the transition period of using the test.
Right. Steve?
We're stepping into a sticky little area. No, I like everything that you're doing, Ruth. I think it's, it's great what you're doing there. And we all, I pretty much agree with what everybody has said. But there's a little sticky thing, which is when all these kids do fail, we want to, we don't want to go out to, I mean, they're, we're going to have huge failure. This, this underserved population dealing with this, I mean, it's, it's going to be incredible. But when that happens, we need to respond correctly to. It shouldn't be responding by telling our principals they need to start pass, getting these kids to pass the tests, because the tests are no good, basically. And they're not testing what we should be testing. So, I mean, what I'm saying is when we get to that point, I'm hoping that we don't just start saying, okay, and think of these tests as a test that actually is measuring what we want to measure, because it's not measuring what we want to ma, it's not even, it's, it's measuring whether we are doing the Smarter Balanced enough. And the way to do that the best, to pass the test, is to do more and more and more and more of that, which is not good education. So we have to do, I'm just saying, and not with the, this, I'm just tossing this out because it's late at night.
No, actually, I think that's.
We want to be real careful when we get, and talk about this as, are our children doing well on this test? Well, the way to get them to do well on the test is to not give them a good education to a certain degree. To make their education weaker allows them to test better, because we focus on those things that we think are going to be on the test. And we teach them the tricks, you teach them the tricks on how to deal with the, this test. Because eventually, people are going to figure that out.
So I guess for me, the part of what you all, that you just said that I really agree with is around responding appropriately. And I, I don't know if we need to add that in at this point, but I, I think that is a really important point.
No, it's down the line.
Because we were saying upfront, here's our values, and we don't want to teach to the test. We want a better education. But it's a really important point. During this difficult transition, we want to make sure that there isn't the reaction of now therefore we have to, we need to reinforce that point. So I think that's, that's well.
I think that, that's where, where that rubber meets the road for us as a board, is that, in fact, the next if and when that happens, we're resting and we're responding based on the values that we've outlined here.
Okay.
That's mine. Anything less than that, I think, would be pretty insincere.
Yeah.
So if the ki, if the kids do worse on the test, we give the superintendent a raise, a big one, right?
I don't know that I would say that.
Well, I.
Because that means they're doing better on the.
That would be incentivizing test.
But it's, it's having that discussion in the context of what we lay out here. Okay, now how do we respond? And what's the appropriate response in terms, in the classroom?
Pamela, Melissa's back. She's back. Melissa?
Hi. How are this phone? So after the native language questions, I took a look at the accommodations, the recommended accommodations for English language learners. And the accommodation that's recommended is read aloud of test directions, directions in the student's native language, which in a district of our size with over 80 languages represented within our schools, could lead to a translation opportunity that our city is unprepared to, to meet the needs of for our students. So it's, and that doesn't extend to the test questions, but it does extend to the directions. So I wanted to make sure that you had that information accurate.
And a lot of, a lot of those children won't, don't have enough language skills to do the test. They need, you can read the directions all you want to them, right?
That was a very strength-based way to say, "We can't do that."
Yeah. So could I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure.
So Melissa, would you say that if we are not able, if, if emerging bilinguals are not able, because of this lack of accommodation and translation, be able to take this test, are there other assessments that we can use in order to assess our students' skills and have teachers and parents and students understand what they're at?
That the state will allow skills, yeah.
That, well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we're, we refer in here to that there are other assessments, that this is not, this is obviously a huge one, and that's one of the issues of how long it will take, but.
Right. So there are other assessments the state uses to take a look both at English language acquisition, but also about what students know and are able to do. Part of the difficulty with the number of languages that we have represented is you really do need students to have a certain level of language acquisition in order to get as deeply into the, the knowledge that, that they need to have. So it is not probable that we would ever be able to get to the depth of content area knowledge for our students who are, for example, newcomers into the country, speaking a language other than one of our five major languages, which we're able to really well support at this point in time. We do use assessments that are translated into Spanish. Spanish is really the, the best assessment, or best supported language for assessments in literacy and in mathematics. And we do do that presently right now. So we're able to, to test students that are native language if it's Spanish. But we don't have that same access for our other languages, such as Vietnamese, our second largest language after Spanish.
So when you, we have the issues around the participation and the sanctions around lack of participation, as well as not meeting or exceeding benchmark, and the, the labeling and the sanctions and all the negative things that go with that. At the same time, of course, we all want also accountability and not having subgroups being hidden or not paid attention to. So like, what is that balance of being able to have that accountability without having it be something that's impossible to achieve or unrealistic, or that we don't have the tools for? And there's no answer to that question. I'm just putting it out there.
Thank you.
So can I, can I respond to something Steve just said about the, our test scores going down? You know, as I've looked at a couple of sample questions from the Smarter Balanced Test, I mean, some of the questions I think actually are much better than in the past. Much better. And they do a much better job of really assessing what the kid knows or doesn't know. I think our, our big issue is around communication. And I know, again, when I was at the Oregon School Boards Association, one of the things that the board said to that organization also is, we just all need to be massively communicating to our parents and to our community, and also Portland Public Schools Communications Department, A, what Common Core is, because there's just such a lack of information out there, and we need to be setting an expectation that this is a more difficult and more complex test that the kids are going to be taking. And we do expect that scores will go down. They will go down, we know that. And that shouldn't be a freakout. It should be just understood. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad way to go. It's just a different kind of an assessment. And, and you're not comparing apples and apples to what was. So I do think we have a huge communications challenge. And I think pretty much every district across Oregon understands, and across the United States, understands.
And with children too, right? Doing, communicating to children.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, they're, one of the things that these tests do, all the tests, even the Hoaks, it's a reason that I opposed the Hoaks, is they're really destructive of children's.
Right, and that's why we have some of our language.
Not in the little, give everybody a trophy thing. They're really nasty with a lot of kids. They're really upset about it.
So I do think that that's a huge piece of our work in the next year, is to be helping, work with other organizations around Oregon and nationally to get that word out, and maybe with the Oregonians help and some of our other, you know, communications partners to, you know, we need to, we need to be informing folks of what the Common Core is and what our expectations are with this new assessment. And Council of Greats, these schools has actually produced a number of things, trying to make them use, available to districts too, to support that.
Exactly. Including things like public service announcements and, and written materials, so, in several different languages, so.
Eighty.
Well, can I just say thank you?
Not in eighty languages, no.
Can I say thank you especially to Ruth, but also to Steve, to Greg, to Andrew, to, you know, everyone.
Gwen, to come to the meeting and do that conversation.
You know, I'm actually really, I, I don't know that other boards are looking at putting out statements like this. I think it's a really important conversation for us to be stepping into in this way. So I really appreciate your corralling all of us to get to this point.
Well, thanks to everybody and to the staff for their help in crafting it. And appreciate really good collective work tonight and beforehand to get it to a good place.
So also say thank you to Ruth and Steve and Greg and everybody else who had input on this, including all of us. And again, I think this is another, this meeting tonight has been a really great example of how a committee of the whole can work very well. We all get an opportunity to listen to each other, which I find very valuable, to bounce ideas back and forth.
Of course, Tom has to agree with everything we've said tonight, but.
Yeah, oh, well, Tom.
Yes.
Please, I'll listen to you.
Yeah, no, just kidding.
So with that, I guess we're finished. So I will go ahead and adjourn. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, July 22. Thank you. Thank you to everybody in our listening audience.